Good evening, everyone. So we're going to start things off tonight a little differently. We do not usually do the pledge of allegiance at our evening meetings. But this evening, we have Local Scout Troop 28 here. I'll raise your hands. They're here as part of their badge, earning their badge. Part of what they do is they come and they listen to city council meetings, learn what happens, and kind of take that knowledge away back with them. So they had asked if they could lead the pledge tonight. So what I'm going to do is ask them to come down in front and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Scout attention. Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Scout Troop 28, now the fun begins. We start our city council meeting. Thank you for being with us. We start with public comment and then have public hearings. If we could set the timer for three minutes each. I'm going to call off like five or six names at a time. So if you could come and stand, that way we can just move a little more quickly through the lineup. So Lucy Lynn, Woody Biggs, Veronica Hunter, Chris Crew, Polina Voronsky, and Sergey Kessel. So first, we'll hear from Lucy.
Good evening, City Council. I know that you have a budget work session scheduled for March 13th, and I would like for each and every one of you to very deeply and sincerely consider your priorities for Raleigh's fiscal year 2024 budget. Cops do not prevent crime. They do not improve lives. Dollars do. Cops respond to crime, and they do so poorly. There is no evidence to suggest that any proactive approach by any police department prevents crime. And in fact, the evidence that all authoritative accounts have show that it's not only ineffective, but it artificially inflates crime statistics, largely in, you guessed it, black and brown communities. We don't need a man with a gun to show up when someone calls 911 because their friend is showing signs of overdose. We don't need a woman with a gun to show up to collect information at the site of a car accident for a report. And we certainly don't need a person with a gun to show up when we call for help because our child is in a state of mental distress and may harm themselves. Police incite violence, murder people during questionable at best and unlawful at worst arrests, and we, the taxpayers, are the ones who foot the bill for their paid vacation as a result. RPD receives the largest departmental allocation of tax dollars in our city budget with nearly $124.5 million for fiscal year 2023. This is your chance to actually do something about it. Take a real stand against police brutality and provide the people that fund your paychecks more than just lip service. Cut RPD's budget and allocate the funds to community programs that can respond peacefully, responsibly, and compassionately to calls for help and actually work to prevent crime. Feed the people, house the communities, provide substantial health care for individuals and families. The money is there. Our government institutions are just spending it in all the wrong places. Invest in community care if you actually want to decrease crime and improve the lives of Raleigh's people. It is a tried and true fact throughout history that the single most prevalent predictor of crime is poverty. Troubled family dynamics, mental health struggles, and delinquent behaviors early in life can all be linked to poverty. When folks feel like they cannot feed themselves or keep a stable home for their families, they become desperate and willing to do anything if it means survival. Sometimes this means working so many hours you cannot properly support the youth you're charged to care for. Sometimes it presents as drug addiction or alcoholism as an escape from this grueling reality, and sometimes it means you feel like the only way to get ahead of the constant inflation and onslaught of bills for basic necessities is to take someone else's wallet or steal a package of diapers and a loaf of bread from the local supermarket. The money to pull our citizens out of poverty is there.
Thank you very much.
Fund communities, not cops.
Thank you. I would respectfully ask that everybody, when the three minutes end, to please cut off your comments. Thank you. Next, Woody Biggs, Veronica Hunter, Chris Crew, Polina Voronsky, and Sergey Kessel. It's Woody Biggs here.
He is withdrawn.
Okay, Veronica Hunter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Land use planning and zoning actions have intended and expressed consequences. They also have unintended and unimagined outcomes. City's recent history of land use and zoning decisions demonstrates an intent to bring diverse populations together in affordable and efficient housing with effective public transportation. The effort appears to be playing out in the loss of existing suitable housing, loss of neighborhood cultures and communities, historic resources and view sheds. We do well to make preservation of existing resources a motivational force, priority, and value in land use planning as Raleigh grows into its future. Recent proposals brought forth by city planners in the development community put several unique resources in jeopardy, among them Oakwood, Hungry Neck, Idlewide, Fisher Heights, College Park, Longview, South Park, and Shaw University. Shaw University is the oldest HBCU in the southeast. It is the first HBCU to admit women, Estee Hall, 1878. Leonard Hall, built in 1881, was the first four-year medical school in the state. It's the first open to African Americans in the United States. They also had the first school of pharmacy and the first law school opened to African Americans. These buildings housed the formation of SNC, the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, under the leadership of Ella Baker. The class of 1949 graduated Angie Brooks Randolph, President of the United Nations General Assembly, 1969. The buildings where these happened are monuments. They're worthy of our protection. Preservation contributes positively to the economy in ways that 40-story buildings can't do. Preservation builds property values, jobs, tourism, positive environmental impacts, social impacts, and neighborhood revitalization because they create a sense of continuity, identity, and belonging. They inspire with feelings of awe, sacredness, history, and learning. They foster community. Preservation means keeping the artifacts and patterns and traditions intact against actions and forces that would sweep them away. Preservation keeps us connected with our community identity. It is the action and process of keeping something valued alive, intact, and free from damage and decay. Preservation is of value. Looking at these recent zoning and variance decisions from purely economic cost-benefit analysis perspective closes stakeholders out of the process and attempts to put a price on the price list. Please make preservation of value, a force, and a priority in zoning and land use planning decisions every time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Polina Voronsky. And if Sergey could come step up too, please.
As you all remember, I had an issue with my personal property, which partially been resolved. But I want to ask, like, who is going to be responsible now for my lost time, more than a year and a half that I've been asked to, I've been asking to talk to me? And once I went outside of this environment and I started acting, then people started moving. But my time has been lost. Time is money. Also, I wanted to ask you, according to your UDOs, you charging $1,700 for a person to approach City Council. If people making minimum wage, how can they make this amount to come up with? $1,700 to talk to you about certain changes that they want to implement when they doing certain work on the property? And they have to be represented by an attorney. Like, this is against human rights. Even if I go and file a lawsuit against somebody, I can represent myself in court, but apparently not in City of Raleigh. I have to hire an attorney and pay $1,700? That's more than any court lawsuit filing cost. This is crazy. Maybe it's for the commercial use prices, but not for a small homeowner. Another question. Permit time. It's been a rough a few years, and the materials are, I'm not to mention skyrocketing, but the supply and demand is completely not back to where it used to be. But our time permitting is still one year. We try to find the contractor that puts you for two, three months on the waitlist, and then try to find the materials. Now, the window is six weeks waiting minimum, no, three months. Anything that you want to get to preserve your house, what somebody was talking about preservation, right, of the properties, it's all, not to mention costly, it's the time consuming as well, more than used to be when, before the COVID. Contractors refuse to work for City of Raleigh. How this can be explained? They don't want to take projects. They say the draconian laws, UDOs, they refuse to work. Like, go try to find a contractor for certain work. I know at least two, and one of them works for City of Raleigh.
I can talk? Okay, I'm here because I called City Attorney about 10, 15 times because when I wanted, you know, solve construction issue, somebody told me, believe it or not, you know, I supposed to talk to City Attorney. I just realized, what City Attorney have to do with construction issues? You know, I have a license. I supposed to talk to structural engineer, like I know we supposed to be same, be on the same page. I talked to Patrick Youngright here, you know, and he don't want to talk. He's a community leader. He not a structural engineer. Who is a structural engineer in City of Raleigh? You know, like, also, you know, like, for example, if I want to, for example, do a driveway, you know, it's not like, how it's called, Transportation Department duty. They supposed to handle city road, but not rightways and another little piece of property. And also, I just want to know, you know, like, General Assembly want to adopt National Code. Do you know what is international code is? It's a metric system. It's a lot of things going on. Your inspector not ready for it. They don't even know basic. You know, like, when I talk to inspector, you know, they just don't know. And everybody shift their ability from one guy to another guy, you know, and somebody supposed to fix something, you know, like, it's a lot of things going on. Also, I just want to talk about like a permit time. You know, like, it's one year. It's not enough, not enough completely, because we making money, and inspector just come over, oh, when you finish your project? You know, he don't know, like, we have a material go up, you know, like, supply and demand problem, you know, like, everything going on, you know, like, and it's a problem in City of Raleigh, and you guys don't have any plans. You know, you don't even know how to manage construction. You know, like, you don't have any professionals who work for you, you know, and who actually solve a problem. You know, if I want to talk, solve a problem between, you know, like, builder and inspector, you know, it's supposed to be structural engineer. You know, California have it, Michigan have it, New York have it, Chicago have it. How come you guys don't have it? You know, like, because, you know, like, city inspector not study to solve a problem, you know, because he only enforcing code book. He is not a builder. He not a structural engineer, you know, like, and also, if City Attorney, I can bring you my blueprint. We can talk about construction, no problem. We can talk about calculation. If I have to talk to you, I can bring my stuff and we can find like a construction design if you want me to. If State give me a license, I supposed to use it. Give me opportunity to making money and another builders as well, because I'm not scared. I come over as a builder and represent another builder who just, you know, like, scared to come over, you know, I will fight, you know, because need some result, because we supposed to making money.
Helen Tark.
Helen Tark, 611 Monroe Drive. You know, I'm usually here to complain about something, but I thought today that I would talk about a positive result of a city council action, but one that took place, not 70, 30 years ago. I'm not that old. But it started with a proposed car wash. Cory knows this story well. But it ended with the development that is now at the corner of Glasscock and Brookside. I invited you there the last time we were here. Today, the car wash would probably be an administrative approval, and this story would have a very different ending. Back then, the council was involved in the decision, and the adjoining homeowners were notified of the proposal, and they told the rest of the neighborhood. The positive result came because the neighbors got together and convinced the council to deny the plan. Honestly, the council sort of squashed the developer, but that was the reason that he decided to meet with us and listen to us about what we thought should happen on the property. And we wanted people living in the development, the eyes-on-the-street concept, and we wanted space for a real market. We wanted spaces for businesses that would serve the neighborhood, restaurant, coffee shop, hair salon, gift shop, stuff like that. And we have that now, but only because the council gave the developer the motivation to listen to us. Basically, it's a mixed-use development designed in 1999. It is, I suspect it is the first mixed-use development in Raleigh, and it has significantly added to the quality of the life in my neighborhood and its sense of community. It brings our neighborhood people together with people from nearby neighborhoods, and all because of a definitive city council action. Of course, this is the abbreviated version of the story to fit the time period, but I guess if you'd like to reach out to me, I can tell you much more about the process. I guess I do have a request. Please consider this story before you turn everything except rezonings over to administrative approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Neil Perry. Is Neil here?
Okay, you guys should have a PowerPoint presentation. You've got that pulled up, and I printed out a little longer one for you guys to have and take up if you'd like. First of all, thanks for having the scouts here. These are great men and women, and they're our future leaders. So thank you. What I wanted to talk to you today, oh, by the way, in addition to be a scout leader, I'm also a professional traffic engineer, so kind of boring, but I thought I'd throw that in there. All right, so next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Next slide, please. So two weeks ago, I'm on I-540 heading to pick up my daughter from school on Capitol Boulevard, and there's a homeless encampment here, okay, where these, kind of where these red triangles are, and there's another homeless encampment here. One gentleman was pushing a shopping cart on the interstate and crossed right in front of me. Speed limit is 70 miles an hour. I had, he was about 160 feet away from me, and I know that just from the markings, and at 70 miles an hour, that's about 80 feet per second. So I had two seconds to decide three options. One, hit him. Two, swerve. Three, slam on brakes. Those are the only options, okay? So I swerved, and I skidded. Thank God my car has skid control and all that, so I didn't lose control, but I skidded, and I missed him. But what if there had been a school bus next to me? Or what if there had been a school bus behind me and I slammed on brakes? Additionally, what if one of these 16-year-old scouts had been driving and had two seconds to make that same decision? What would they have chosen? So the reason those homeless encampments are there is they're panhandling at those intersections on Capitol Boulevard, okay, because there's a lot of traffic there, okay? So you saw some of the, can you go back one, did you see some of the trash? So you can see, this is one of the encampments. I got down and walked down the embankment and took pit photos. All right, next slide. It's not just a Capitol Boulevard problem. This was, this person was, this was 5:00 at Blue Ridge Road and Lead Mine, standing right in the middle of the road in rush hour traffic. Again, you know, he didn't get run over, but what if one of these 16-year-olds had been driving? You know, that's, it's dangerous not only for the panhandler, but it's also dangerous for motoring public. All right, next slide. So you've got, you've got four options. One, you can ignore the problem, you know, you can do that, but that's condoning it. You can pass an ordinance prohibiting panhandling on all roads within city limits. Okay, that's kind of extreme, all right? Panhandling is constitutionally protected. It's protected by the First Amendment. But it is not, it can be limited and prohibited on busy and dangerous streets. Other cities has done it, as you can see. So you can pass an ordinance banning it. You can pass an ordinance banning it during rush hour traffic and in high school zones.
Neil, your time is up. Thank you. I'm going to ask the city manager if they can, you all can have an internal discussion and just follow up with us in a manager's report and let us know what some options might be. Thank you. Octavia Rainey.
Good afternoon, councilor. I want to ask this question, and this is a very dear question, and it is very sincere to me, because I have been studying this and studying this. Do the City of Raleigh have a disdain for black people? Now, let me tell you why I'm asking this, and you have to bear with me because I'm emotional. Since the end of slavery, the creation of the Raleigh Development Commission, and I keep going back to this commission, in 1953, all they did was move out black communities. Then, when you formed the Community Development Department, the only thing they did was take up the practice and patterns, practice and patterns of moving out black people with HUD dollars. Now, I'm going to HUD on this because I'm not satisfied, and I believe Biden has let down the black people. Something is wrong with that picture. You tell me you can't do 30%? You did 30% 15 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago? I want to know why you can't do 30%? Because you think black people bring crime? We got to talk about this. Something is seriously wrong here. And mixed income do not get you black people. Mixed income only get you 15 units. What is that? What is that? You look at the New Bern Avenue corridor, the part that I stay in is the black section. The way they got that rezoning now, it'll wipe it out. It'll wipe it out. So it won't be any black communities left in the inner city. And Mr. Melton, you talk about transit, black people ride that bus. Black people ride that bus. You go down to the bus station, you go out to Capitol Boulevard, you see all black people standing up, you only have two seats for them to sit in, and the rest are standing up. I have complained to the city for 15 years about that. What happened? They kept it. So if you talking about black folk, let's have this conversation. I had a meeting with Greg Warren. Greg Warren told me, two mayors told him, it is time to move Raleigh housing authority in a different direction. I want to know what is that direction? The majority of the people they house is 30%, and now you doing mixed income. Mixed income is not race. Mixed income is not a protected class. So I am very concerned about this mixed income. You don't need no mixed income. Give black people their rights and put them back in their housing. That's what y'all really need to do. I am so sick and tired of this. I'm doing a tour of the rezoning of New Bern Avenue corridor. I'm inviting, I can't think of his name now, but anyway, he can come along, because I'm going to wet him out.
Okay, next. Next, we have Gene Alston. Is Gene Alston here?
My name is Gene Alston. I'm with Social Justice Ministries in North Carolina. I know Mr. Branch, and I know the mayor. This is something that I am with Sylvia Wiggins also, and we run a New Bern House, 501 New Bern House. I have asked for the mayor to come there and look at this house. Now, we house at least 75 families there. Now, I've seen the water bill come from $5,000 to $7,000, and we house these people there. We do this for free. We are a nonprofit, and see, when this thing opened up 40 years ago, we didn't have anything like a bailout, like the other companies and everything did. We done this ourself. So when I'm looking at people, the water bill is higher than their rent, and the electrical bill is higher than their rent, then there's a problem. We need some way to bail out, once a year, some of these families so they can keep their homes, especially the New Bern House. We're talking about people that live on the street. We're trying to do something about that, and we're trying to, the hardest we can. Now, I know there's funds somewhere, and I would like to also know, every time we have a meeting here, there should be some kind of update that we need to look on the computer and see what happened after the meeting. I mean, what have we done? Or what have we changed? And then we have the same meeting, and we talk about the same thing, and there's still nothing being done. So we need an update on what y'all are doing. And I'm not going, I'm not going to agree with that, because you only can do what you can do. But if more people, instead of getting in a little circle and talk about what's bad, come out to the meetings, and let's try to get things done. There's power in numbers. And I think if more people came to these meetings, this is what it's here for. Voice out your opinion, but I want to see something done about it. And I keep coming here saying the same thing over and over. It's a waste of your time, and it's a waste of our time. We need to see what's happening. So if y'all can do something like, give us an update, like, before the next meeting, let's see what we done about this one. I think that would be better for us. All right? And thank you.
This was a topic of Raleigh Water today. I've asked the city manager to follow up from Raleigh Water and Housing and Neighborhoods. I've asked the city manager to follow up from Raleigh Water and Housing and Neighborhoods. Thank you, Jean. All right, Lisa.
Lisa Hewitt, 712 Hinsdale Street. I am here again to discuss the criminality and disruption the Sahara hookah bar has created for the Glenwood Brooklyn neighborhood. For everyone's contacts, this business directly adjoins a residential neighborhood and for more than 10 years operates until 2:00 a.m. weekdays and until 5:30 a.m. on weekends. Since the rise of the popularity of Glenwood South, the Sahara has become a beacon of after-hour partygoers. I won't waste time here listing the nuisances, crimes, complete lack of sense of security, and exhaustion of city resources, leadership, and staff that have resulted. I know you're frustrated. Every police captain that's been assigned to this area has been frustrated. We're frustrated. And we're frustrated because the Sahara appears to be operating legally within current laws and zoning parameters. There are obvious loopholes in existing laws that allow this type of business to remain open until 5:30. We all agree that the crime we've experienced occurs between when Glenwood South shuts down and 5:00 a.m. Remove a drunk remove a site for drunken disorderly people to congregate, and crime will decrease. There's another hookah bar just a couple of blocks away, also within residential area. They don't seem to have these problems. The difference, they are closed at 2:00 a.m. Now, I understand Councilmember Harrison has asked for a meeting to be convened next week to discuss this very topic. The agenda we would like to see discussed includes two points, a reduction in operating hours of 2:00 a.m. and a radius of protection and accountability. More specific to the point, we would like to also talk about can we please specifically identify what state and local laws that prevent you from taking measurable and serious action? There are significant barriers regarding the practicality of enforcing the noise ordinance. How can we remedy that? Which laws need amending to include hookah bars and put them in a category requiring a minimum 2:00 a.m. closing time? Which laws need amending to address owner accountability for anything that happens on and within the radius of his property? Which laws need amending to increase penalties for repeat offenses dramatically? How do we get this business declared a nuisance and removed from our city permanently? Most importantly, which laws need to be amended such that this business's current practices are not allowed to be grandfathered? And finally, how can we help? Last Saturday, we all witnessed the tragedy of yet another long string of gun-related violent occurrences emanating from this nuisance business. What legislative offices do we need to park ourselves at to get the protection that we need? And I'm being serious about that. I'm willing to sit in front of somebody's office. I don't want to wait until another bullet goes through one of these homes. Thank you.
Lisa, I'm going to ask the city attorney to follow up with us on this. I know that Councilmember Harrison has a meeting on this, one of many that we've had, and there are limitations statutorily on what we can do. So if you could follow up with us for the benefit of the new council members, that would be helpful, and let's see what comes out of this meeting as well. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Lael. I live at 122 North Swain Street, where I've lived in the same house for the past 18 years. It's the home where my wife and I have raised our three kids. It's a diverse and caring neighborhood full of different people from different backgrounds and different socioeconomic. That's how it was when we moved in those years ago, and that's how it has remained. If I do a 360-degree view around my house, it's the same residents, same homeowners, same neighbors who have essentially been there the entire time, many of whom were there many years before I moved in. Our area, Hungry Neck, has been a fantastic place to raise a family. My children appreciate the differences in our neighbors, and they have developed empathetic hearts and minds because of that. Our family is all for affordable housing and increased transit options. Some of the same ideas proposed with the Transit Overlay District. My major heartburn over this rezoning is that it will be at a cost. There have been plenty of opportunities in recent years for affordable housing to go in along the New Bern Avenue corridor. Instead, we've watched as even more high-dollar condominiums have sprung up. This does not instill great confidence that anything built along this route will be geared towards affordable housing, but will instead once again result in residents paying big money to live near downtown and those of whom will probably never use public transportation anyway. I also have a fear that this will undo some of the wonderful historic preservation that many have fought for decades for this area. Better yet, the rezoning that is proposed will likely do nothing more than run off and scare away longtime residents who already live in a high-density area. I can look out my kitchen window almost into the kitchen of my next-door neighbor, and we love how close-knit we all are. To institute the zoning changes that are proposed, while they won't directly affect my home initially, I have little doubt that this risk that this will end up risking that will end up being the death knell of a vibrant, energetic, diverse neighborhood. Hungry Neck is a gem of a neighborhood, and it would signal the end of it and many other neighborhoods like it in the city. I ask that you rethink the rezoning of that corridor. You would be destroying a beautiful, proven community on the uncertain hope of something that may not be successful in the end anyhow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kara Sanders. Is Kara Sanders here? And next, we have Jennifer McKinney, Frank Helima, Donna Bailey, Eddie Davis, and Nicole
Greetings. It's another amazing day in paradise. My super shiro name is Mama Kai, but my government documents read Carlin Sanders. My son and I stay at 1020 Buck Jones Road. I want to say again, thank you for your service. Happy Women's History Month, Happy International Women's Day tomorrow, and congrats, Councilor Black, for your invitation to speak next week. I attended all three city council meetings last month and stayed for most of them. I was at today's meeting as well. This time, I was late, but I stayed to the end. I had written this amazing presentation for tonight, but decided to change it all up after today's city council meeting. The papers I handed you are a copy of what I was going to say in case I don't finish this time, another copy of the letter I submitted last time by Dr. Mary Haskett, who I work with. She wrote it at my request. The email I received from Nick Dula, Program Development Administrator for the City of Raleigh Housing and Neighborhoods Department and the Community of Small Business Development. He was following up with me because of what I said about living in a hotel at the last meeting, and we had an awesome conversation. One of the suggestions he made was to get involved in the homelessness task force chaired by Councilor Stormy Fort. Lastly, I'm submitting a copy of the agenda for a statewide conference called Leveraging North Carolina's Assets to Prevent Child Trauma. I'm one of the speakers, and this is my subtle invitation. It's sponsored by USC, UNC, but is being held at NC State. I was originally going to talk about all the things I learned from investigating some of the properties I learned during I learned during the February 21st public hearings, but that's not where my passion lies. I also realize that no one is presenting solutions to the actual root cause of the problems the city is facing. So I'm here to finish the introduction I started last time. My passion lies in creating a city where all people, individuals and families, childrens, adults, and our seniors, the financially stable, and the destitute can live healthy. If I stand before you and I want to talk about blue zones, covert and overt trauma, also known as Big T and Little T, polyvagal theory, the microbiome, ikigai, or I mention the works of some of the greatest minds in the neuroscience and trauma-informed worlds, and you have no idea what I'm talking about, this is my invitation to learn more. The conference is a great start. I'm almost out of time, so I'm going to end by saying this. My nerves got the best of me last time, and I didn't finish, so I'm going to finish with what I was going to say. My final words were the conclusion I have come to is parenting is the problem, but parenting is also the solution. This is from a no shame, no blame perspective. I truly believe parents are doing the very best they can with the education they have and the circumstances they are living under. With so much new information and the accessibility to it, now is the time to know better so we can do better and support one another in doing it. Healthy cities start with healthy communities. Healthy communities start with healthy individuals. Healthy individuals start as healthy children, and healthy children start with healthy parenting. We should be reaching out to renovate and rebuild healthy people before we ever begin tearing down, renovating, or building properties to make Raleigh the place to be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jenny McKinney. I first moved to Raleigh from Burke County in 2015 to study at NC State University. Now, Raleigh is my home, and you all are my neighbors. There's an old nursery rhyme where a little boy named Henry sings to his friend, "There's a hole in my bucket, dear Liza, dear Liza." The song continues as Liza tries to help him figure out how to fix the hole. Before the bucket is fixed, though, she tells Henry to fill the bucket with water. Well, he can't do that. There's a hole in it. So Raleigh, there's a hole in our budget. Next slide. The hole in our budget is policing. The Raleigh Police Department's budget was the second-largest portion of the city's budget in fiscal year 2022. Our spending on policing has consistently grown even after George Floyd was murdered in 2020. The spending is justified by worries about crime rates, but whether you believe the data or not, there is no correlation between police spending and crime rates. Next slide. It's clear that policing is not a solution to crime, and more spending on police sure isn't the solution to police violence. Policing is the problem. Traffic stop data from 2022 reveals the RPD disproportionately stops, searches, and uses force against black drivers. In 2020, folks called for implicit bias training, and cities provided more funding to the police to implement it. While a 2020 study of NYPD's training revealed that although it was somewhat effective in changing minds, the training did not change behavior or outcomes. We have tried these and other reforms that further inflate police budgets with resources that could instead be used to improve our quality of life. Next slide. Insurance premiums and deductibles have dramatically increased nationwide because of use-of-force claims. How much money has the city of Raleigh and RPD paid out in settlements for unlawful searches, arrests, and use of excessive force? Why are we, the people of Raleigh, paying for officers' transgressions against us? Why are we forced to assume the physical and financial risk of their abuse of power? Next slide. There has been a longstanding call to end police harassment and violence and a call for investment in the community's needs, not just property or business owners' needs, the community. It's time to invest our resources and commitment in something new. Next slide. Two of the demands that Raleigh Demands Justice presented to this council on February 7th give a starting point. Next slide. The first is that we demand RPD officers carry their own liability insurance so that they assume the risk and expense of their own misconduct. Next slide. The city also must fund a 24/7 citywide standalone, non-law enforcement team.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, can you pass the handout to her? Thank you. Frank Helima, in the More Homes, More Choices presentations, Patrick Young admits that the missing middle will not create housing that becomes affordable until at least one to two generations after it is built. Tonight, I have given council members a draft framework for creating housing that will be more affordable than what is being built under the guise of the missing middle. My slideshow will focus on one aspect of the recommendations, mixed-use development along major corridors. The recommendations read, do not allow any new construction of businesses along the main commuter corridors that are only one-story. Require that residences be built above the business. These could be apartments or condos, but preferably condos. Being able to go downstairs to a restaurant, salon, gym, cleaners will reduce carbon emissions. Look for opportunities where existing businesses along the four-lane corridors can be converted to mixed-use or residential by building above the existing footprint. Provide a defined period of tax breaks when this is done. Slide 1 is an example of mixed-use development at North Hills. The human scale of this portion of North Hills is very attractive. Slide 2 is a similar development at Wade Park in West Raleigh. Slides 3, 4, and 5 are examples of strip malls and a vacated pharmacy across from the Broadstone Oak City Apartments on Capitol Boulevard. Could these be retrofitted with housing above? Slide 6 is of Quail Ridge Apartments, which have recently been rezoned. Here, the existing Noah could be saved in mixed-use built along the street corridor to provide services. Now, we enter the realm of missed opportunities. Slide 7 is the single-story retail maze built on Six Forks Road in front of Wegmans. We knew Raleigh was growing fast when this design was approved. Wouldn't it have been better as mixed-use with residences built above? Slide 8 of Apartments in the Old Town Development on Rock Quarry Road is an even more recent example where shops on the lower level along the main road would have made this new neighborhood more walkable and livable. And Slide 9 of Quarry Trace Apartments, a little farther east on Rock Quarry Road, is another example of failed design, which makes this new area not only a food desert, but also a desert for barber and beauty shops, coffee shops, restaurants, and other opportunities to provide services to new residents. Clearly, when past councils approved these projects, they were not striving for the stated goals of the missing middle. Stop destroying the integrity of established neighborhoods. Stop the destruction of Noah, fostering gentrification, and the socioeconomic cleansing of older neighborhoods when the city is not practicing what it is preaching with the new construction. Repeal missing middle and move quickly to implement policies that are more conducive to increasing the supply of housing that will be more affordable. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I want to take a minute to thank Mayor Pro Tem Branch for his for last month's public comments. It was refreshing to be able to have the full three minutes to speak, and we're allowed to finish our thought after the time ended in a respectful manner. I appreciate that all the councillors were actively listening and that the residents felt heard by all of you. I hope this continues. I want to talk about the rezoning process and some areas that need improving. First, the neighborhood meetings that are run by the applicant or their attorneys are not working. Since the developers run the meetings, the information that is being given is often very biased and not accurate coming from the applicant or their attorney. One attorney said in a recent neighborhood meeting that the comprehensive plan was no longer relevant. I hadn't heard that. There was a city staffer there, but they were silent. I have been to many neighborhood meetings, and the city staffer is often just there to observe. I don't really understand what their purpose is when they attend those meetings. A better way to run these meetings is to have a city staffer or someone who is neutral to run the meeting and let the applicant be a part of it. In addition, I would like to address how the Planning Department considers rezonings to be consistent with the comp plan by just adding more housing. That is just a small part of what the comp plan envisioned. And you'll be getting a handout. I didn't have time to make the slide. The Planning Department only uses the expanding housing choices as a guide for consistency. I'd like to read to you what the comp plan says about expanding housing choices. Right, this is taken right from the comp plan. Raleigh will have an expanded supply of affordable and workhouse housing options that provide housing opportunities for all segments of our population. This expanded supply of decent, affordable housing will provide stability for families, improve opportunities for education and career advancement, and reduce homelessness for low and moderate-income housing. The whole statement about expanding housing choices should be used to measure if it is being followed in its entirety and not just what the developers want to build. Council, you were elected to govern for what the city needs, not just what the developers want. You have the power to require that affordable housing is included in most projects. Please do not keep repeating the same mistakes that previous councils have made that continues to make our affordable housing supply worse. We're losing over 4,000 units a year. Something has to change, has to change. Please implement the whole vision of the comp plan and not just cherry-picked items by the developers.
Eddie Davis. Eddie Davis, thank you. And after Eddie, we have Nicole Williams, Carrie Collins, Damonte Crawford, Josh Bradley, Matthew Brown, and Shane Collins.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council, staffs, and to the mayor. My name is Eddie Davis. My name is Eddie Davis, and I've been here several times before. My concerns are still the same: affordable housing, rent control, price gouging. Now, those that own homes, you wouldn't know about price gouging. I'm talking about people that are renting right now. And they're, they're doing price gouging on renting, you know. You know, the cost of living, low-paying jobs. We, we had a, last year, I was listening to the news, and it was talking about states that was participating in the, the increase of the cost of, of living wages. And it was 23 states that participated. Unfortunately, North Carolina was not one of the 23 states, and I was really disappointed to, to find that out. To the mayor, Ms. Mayor, we understand some things you can't do. Some of these problems we are challenging the federal government. But you, your voice carries some weight. We need your support. This problem must be dealt with now before the streets are flooded with homeless people. On February 22nd, we had a meeting with Senator Lisa Raffstein voicing our concerns to her, meeting with, the, the meeting went very well. We also met with Congressman Wiley Nickel on February 23rd at a town hall meeting in Apex, in which I spoke there as well. I did get a, a letter from him yesterday, and, you know, I was really amazed at the, the quick response that I received. My question to you is, can you give us a recent update on what being done regarding affordable housing? If so, you do have my email address. You know, I, I, I will continue to reach out to our government officials, and this problem must be fixed. Time after time, again, you will see my face. We're going to continue to make good trouble. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eddie. Nicole Williams? Is Nicole Williams here? Okay, if you could step up to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Williams, and I came here to speak tonight about homelessness, but that has already taken place quite a few times, and so I really want to speak about something else that's near and dear to my heart and I think deserves attention. So if you'll turn off the PowerPoint, and we'll leave the pictures out. So tonight, I want to talk about, I know I don't look like it, but I'm homeless. That's something that I spoke on at the last meeting about affordable housing and how a lot of people have been subject to homelessness because they can't afford housing. And unfortunately, I sleep in a space somewhat like the one that you just seen, which is somewhere in the downtown area. And I have been violently, verbally, sexually harassed night after night after night by people in the neighborhood, mostly coming from the bars circa 1818, boxcar, charlie pub in this area. I've done everything that I know to try to get it to stop, everything that I think a reasonable person would do. I've contacted the bar managers. I've had conversations with them. When they didn't respond, and they told me that this wasn't their issue, I talked to the police department, who didn't respond, because I actually have a similar situation with them, where I was touched by one of their officers, and they didn't respond properly. I talked to the Attorney General's Office, who referred me back to the police department. I talked to, I tried to, I talked to Sheriff Gerald, I'm sorry, thank you, Baker, and his office didn't really respond either. And I even contacted the council, to which I didn't get a response or any assistance. So I'm here tonight because this has affected me in a great way, and I know you can't understand that, and sexual harassment is something that's hard for people to understand, but it's not joking, it's not teasing. And even if you call it bullying, bullying is something that needs to stop also. Every night, I have to hear these people talk about my kids are in the room, but my private parts using explicit vulgar language. I've asked them to stop. I've tried to go and identify these people, but when I walk over, they run, as which they've been told to do. They've been told they've been doing nothing wrong because they're entitled to their opinions. They've been told that I'm being overly sensitive, and I don't have a right to complain, I need to get over it. And they're being told that if they all do it, then nobody has to, no one will, will be punished, and I think that's wrong. So I'm here today to talk to you about that, to see if we can find some solution. There's multiple things in that. I mean, Raleigh City has a high trafficking rate here. I mean, the, the college students are still being sexually harassed, sexually assaulted. That doesn't get enough attention. And so I'm here tonight to ask you what you can do, and if there's anybody in the community under my voice who will help me advocate, please reach me at peaceandjustice@mail.com. That's mail, not gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager's going to have somebody follow up. Thank you. Carrie Collins. And next is Delmonte Crawford, then Josh Bradley, Matthew Brown, and Shane Collins. If you could step up, we would appreciate it.
All right. Good evening. First, first, I'd like to thank you for changing the conversation with Kane about the North Hills rezone. I know it takes some items off the table that the city felt was beneficial, but the residents in the area are greatly relieved. Second, I'd like to ask that future building permits in the North Hills area, including along St. Albans, stop until that what has been approved is completed. There is only speculation about what habits the people who will be living in these buildings will be, thus, how, how they would impact the infrastructure. The key word is speculation. We are already seeing negative impact from the changes in place, and there are at least six more buildings in various stages of being built and more approved. We need quantitative data for traffic studies, et cetera, for what impact approved built plus Six Forks Corridor changes has on the area before more density is approved. Third, like Shane, I have lyrics for you to ponder. "The last resort by the eagle say that some wretch man came and raped the land. He put up a bunch of ugly boxes, and Jesus people bought them." The song finishes with, "You call someplace paradise, you kiss it goodbye." Raleigh has been in and out of the top five in best places to live in the past 20-ish years, which has produced a place most cannot live. We have less people owning homes, less people living comfortably, and even more, even more, even before inflation. Raleigh not only has a, a housing crisis, it also has a morals crisis. Average income in Raleigh is $70,000, which makes affordable housing at the average rent of $1,630. Do you know what's wrong with that calculation? Average includes the affordable housing units that are slated to be torn down because of recent actions by council. Most of the developers talk about average income when they address affordable housing. However, median income for Raleigh is $42,000, which means affordable rent is $1,000 per month, not $1,630. And for the record, those micro-units going for $1,000 is insulting to those working and trying hard to keep a roof over their heads. Work with the other cities in North Carolina to change the laws of North Carolina. Work with NCSU and engineering firms to help homeowners figure out how to split their homes or identify how to put up ADUs. There are good ideas out there. There are good people suffering. It is your job to find a solution to stop the suffering for the hard-working Raleighites. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Delmonte Crawford.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. Good evening, Councilwoman Black, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you for the minutes. Before I start, if you have not gone to Bigsby Coffee off of Glenwood, please go. They have really, really good coffee. The manager from Michael, he, yes, Bigsby Coffee, he's a really good person up there. I don't know what happened to their kiosk, but they're giving out free coffee, first and foremost. Secondly, let's give a round of applause to the women leaders on our council. I know y'all can do better than that. If this was a Canes or Duke or church, y'all would be clapping a little bit louder than that, right? So I won't waste too much time here. My message for today is, where is your yes? I promise I won't try to get too, too religious in here, but where is your yes? Coming from 2 Corinthians 1:20. "For all the promises of God in him are yes, and in him amen to the glory of God through us." What a great promise of God we have today in 2 Corinthians 1:20. We see that for no matter how many promises God has made, they are yes in Christ. And so through him, the amen is spoken by us to the glory of God. So what to do from our part? We just need to make sure that your situation is, is in line with God's Word. Then believe and receive in Jesus' name. Can you imagine that there are over 3,000 promises of God for us to claim over our life in God's Word and to already know each of them is already yes and amen? I want to leave you with this. I had the opportunity to sit with Mr. Eddie Davis with Congressman Nickel, and Mr. Eddie brought up this, Madam Mayor, if you can look at me just one second. He asked about, I know, he asked about rent control. And what Congressman Nickel said was, "You, Madam Mayor, cannot do anything. It is up to legislation." But what Mr. Eddie said was, "You have a voice. Use it." Where is your yes, Madam Mayor? Where is your yes to the homeless that are living literally 10 minutes away from here? Where is your yes to justice served for Ashley McGregor-Stallings, who's homeless? Where is your yes for this woman who has been sexually harassed downtown? Where is your yes for Ms. Wanda Gilbert Coker? Where is your yes for saving Shaw? Madam Mayor, I am running for Lieutenant Governor, and I approve this message. Where is your yes?
Next, we have Josh Bradley. Last we checked, it was.
You never can tell. Josh Bradley, 1324 Spring Lawn Court, mayor and councillors. There's been a lot of talk at this meeting today and lately about the growing and multiplying camps for the unhoused in and around the city. Policies enacted by the last council are at least, are at the very least partially responsible for the doubling of the unhoused population. The significant loss of housing affordable to workers and the poor during the last council has pushed many folks from their homes and into the camps. These, can we call them Baldwin boroughs, or would you prefer Baldwinvilles? Whichever. The city must make a priority to find housing and services for our unhoused fellow citizens, and it needs to be a top priority. The city spends more on parks than on housing, which is morally problematic. Housing is a human right and needs to be treated as such. While housing is being organized and prioritized, hopefully, consider the following things to do as immediate steps. Number one, open all city buildings to be used as shelters for white flag days and severe weather events, including the convention center. Number two, don't send the cops to break up the camps. It's terribly immoral to destroy what little people that live there have. Number three, make sure city councillors visit the camps in their district as regularly as possible, so that their needs may be communicated to the council. At-large councillors and the mayor should attempt to visit every camp in the city within a year. It's important to see where people are coming from. Bathroom facilities and trash removal should be provided by the city in all of the Baldwin boroughs, at the very, at the very least. It's easy to do and not very expensive, because people should be treated with dignity. And we should be putting them in, in housing immediately and offering services immediately, but until such time. And we need to work on converting the buildings and, the existing buildings in Dix, Dix Park as housing for those in need. Maybe you can use some of that extensive parks bond to cover that. Remember, housing is a human right. Housing should be prioritized over the parks. It blows my mind that housing in neighborhoods is a smaller department than parks. I, I think that's a moral failure on the, the part of our system. I think that all of y'all up there have the power to make things change, and I think all of y'all up, I think a good many of y'all up there want to make things change. And it's important that you focus and prioritize making sure that we build the city that's great for everyone. And in order to do that, you've got to start from a firm foundation, which is in the bottom. Thank you very much, and have a great one.
Matthew Brown. Shane Collins will follow. Now, Matthew, you are next, then Shane.
Good evening. Thank you for your service, and thank you for letting me speak. You have surely seen this visual from Downtown Raleigh Alliance showing the high-rises coming to downtown Raleigh. The blue are completed, the green are under construction, the yellow are in site preparation, and the orange have not yet begun work yet. This does not show projects that have not had their zonings approved, and it doesn't include Downtown South, or Seaboard Station, or out Hillsborough Street, just central downtown. Basically, we will have about four times as many high-rises as we have now, but the same streets, the same water and sewer systems. So Raleigh will not be desperate for high-rises. You can be choosier in the rezonings you approve, and you can ask for something in return for approving them. And if developer doesn't want to do what you ask, fine, we have plenty of high-rises already. Now, some of these I'm fine with. They'll be built, they're on what is now a surface parking lot, or worthless little buildings that nobody cares about. But some will require demolition of wonderful historic buildings, of which we are losing at a dizzying rate these days. The most damaging of these proposals will soon come before you, threatening Shaw University's beautiful historic buildings, such as Leonard Hall. This was Shaw's medical school, which opened in 1882 and was the first four-year medical school in the country. 400 of North Carolina's black doctors were trained here. Tyler Hall was built in 1910 and was the library. The Rogers Daniel Peeg's House and the Fraser House are the two finest houses in the Prince Hall Historic District, and, and are owned by Shaw and part of the rezoning request. Some have said Shaw wants this rezoning, so we should do it. That is not accurate. The current administration of Shaw wants the rezoning, not the faculty, not the students, not the alumni, not the future Shaw students who will look at the pictures of these beautiful buildings and ask, "Who destroyed our wonderful historic campus?" Some say Shaw needs the money. Well, then, let's give them some money. I, I just read that the city wants to spend $425 million on a new convention center building. The one we have is only 15 years old. Can't we take some of that money to support our downtown university? Now, part of the campus would be fine to rezone. Around the corner from these buildings is a useless grass lawn. It's huge. Put the high-rises there. Please just don't destroy our wonderful historic architecture. Thank you.
Next, we have Shane Collins. After Shane, we have Kim Schlepp, Dr. Muckterian, Andrea Fennel, Cole McMullin, and Eugene Myrick, if you could prepare to step up. Thank you, Shane. What song do you have for us tonight?
I started in September with Eminem, asking council to lose yourself and seize your opportunity. So now I'm circling back with Aerosmith, done by Eminem. Sing for the moment. Sing with me. Sing for the year. Sing for the laughter. Sing for the tear. Sing it with me, just for today, maybe tomorrow. Maybe tomorrow, the good Lord will take you away. They say music can alter moods and talk to you. Well, y'all have heard the North Hills Rezone pause, and it is a pause. I'm sure it will come back. But we still need more affordable housing. We need the city to buy up vacant land and incentivize builders to create affordable houses, not microunits of 160 to 500 square feet. Prison cells are 48 square feet. But then these critics crucify you, journalists burn you, fans turn on you, attorneys all want to turn at you. They, they want you to lose your mind every time you get mad. Well, WRAL had a story that says it takes four people to cover the cost of rent in Raleigh. Zillow reports a person making minimum wage has to work 144 hours a week for a one-bedroom apartment. That's six days at 24 hours a day. There's not many people that can do that and survive. So sing with me. Sing for the year. Sing for the laughter. Sing for the tear. Durham Northwood investors and developers are working with the Walthound Community Association to advocate for affordable housing at the Old North Gate Shopping Center. Rents are high, so the city interim budget director, Steed, proposes a living wage and increased salaries from $36,000 to $40,000. But Councilor Jones pointed out that 30% of $40,000 would only cover $1,000 a month in rent. Raleigh's average rent is $1,800 per month, or my wife said 16, I, somewhere in the middle. It's still too much. So sing with me for the year. Sing for the laughter. Sing for the tear. Sing for solutions. DC is putting housing downtown in empty offices. There are many empty, little-used state office buildings that could be acquired. I'm sure the state would love to offload those to a paying customer like the city of Raleigh.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Kim Schlepp. Sorry if I mispronounced your last name.
It's Schleep.
Schleep, thank you.
And I apologize for my attire. You can forgive me, it's March Madness. So don't, don't judge me because I'm not wearing your team. This is my first city council meeting, and I have a hopeful life. So on the one hand, I'm disappointed to be here, but what an honor, and I thank you all for giving us this time to speak. I'm going to say a little bit about who I am, why I'm here, what I understand, most of it from the past two weeks, what I don't understand, and what I ask. Okay, so I live in the 500 block of East Edington Street. I've owned and lived in my home for over 20 years. That was back when the city was practically begging us to come down. They offered low-interest loans, time limits to live in your home. They were begging police officers, teachers, families to come downtown, please. So I did not take advantage of any of those programs, but I did buy the home, and I've had the same neighbors in a historically black neighborhood. Both of my neighbors to my left and my right are black. The neighbors, all of them across the street from me, are black. And we have very little turnover in our neighborhood. I know mixed income. I learned the term "middle housing" this week. I know all these terms get thrown around, but our neighborhood is successful, vibrant. We have families, we have single people, old people, young. It's a great, successful city program. Wow. Well, the reason I'm here, so that's a little bit about who I am. I was single then, I'm a mom, in the only home my children have known, and that's, they're city kids, that's what they call themselves. So why I'm here is to talk about real quick, the TOD, and the BRT, and all these terms I've learned this week, because I'm not an urban planner. I could have gone to school for that, but I have no interest in it. It's a dubious position to have taken away from my family because every single person in my neighborhood didn't even realize they'd been rezoned. My neighborhood is currently split. The ones across the street are still residential. I am RX3. What's RX3? When did that happen? Ira Mabel met with him face-to-face. He couldn't tell me when that happened. I guess he moved here from Boston. I attended the Zoom call for Wake Up Wake County, the executive director, Nathan Spencer, also from Boston. And, you know, I don't have any problem with that. I was born in Jersey, half my family's from the north. I love Raleigh. But the way I feel right now is that the same city that begged us to come down here is now trying to get us out. There are city employees who are willing to speak off the record and will tell you, the BRT is code for development, getting the low-to-mid-income families out, and density in for developers to profit. Those are city employees. NCOD, uh, NCDOT, who this is not their program, says that the BRT is code for developers. I ask you to keep our NCOD in the TOD to protect the historic neighborhoods.
Thank you, Kim. Your time is up. Kimberly, Dr. Muckterian. I'm going to ask, when I call your name, to please come up, so we, you're lined up, we can move through this. Andrea Farrell, Cole McMullin, Eugene Myrick, Isabel Maddox, and then Laura Harris.
Thank you. Well, Mayor, Mayor Baldwin, thank you for your request, but I have one of you. And that is, I know you like music, so my song tonight is "Respect." Just a little bit. R-E-S-P-E-C-T. Find out what that means to me. My whole community is here, and while they're not here, they're here with me in heart and spirit. Why? Because we need respect. Now, once we get respect, we can get affordable housing. That's not the problem. You have to respect every citizen. That citizen, whether they are rich or poor, developer, renter, or homeowner, should be able to live in your city, fair and square. And when I hear Ms. Lisa say Glenwood South has crime, well, who would have known? Because the only people who are getting killed for their crime is southeast Raleigh. I said, the only people who die from crime is those in southeast Raleigh. So I don't know what kind of crime you all have in Glenwood South, but ours might be just a little bit different. We may be targeted more. And as you well know, last month, Darrell Wims was killed by electrocution, a form of lynching, of which I've asked you to stand in solidarity with the black community, not with those you choose to stand with that's convenient for you, but the entire black community, the one that holds you accountable every single day. So today, I'd like to talk about a young man named Jaleel Ellis, and I'm almost jealous that the Boy Scouts are there, and they can enjoy their lives and come down here. But our young men, at 13 and 14, will be pulled over by the cops for just standing in their own neighborhoods. And if you do not recall, I sent you an email saying that these young men, guns are pulled on them. This is called excessive use of force. What we found is that excessive use of force is protected under the personnel records of the police. So anytime our young men have guns pulled out on them, they're not allowed to talk about it. The police department don't even have to disclose that they pull guns on our children. Now, if that's not clandestine, I said, if that's not clandestine, that's the lynching law, because lynching is not a rope or tree, it's now a law and a knee. So I'm asking you to take these laws back and get your lobbyists to go back to the General Assembly and say, take this protection off of the police and put it on the people. I dare you, love us all, Mary Ann. If not, we'll be subject not just to Bladeham Borough, but to plantation of Missy Baldwin. Thank you. And if you'd like to speak up, you're welcome to do so, because I need you all to affirm that our children will be protected equally, and that's equality.
Dr. Muckterian, your time is up.
No, it's not.
Yes, and I've asked the next speaker.
And I'm gonna tell you, our life is on the line, Mary Baldwin. Our lives are on the line. Now, respect that.
And please be respectful, too. Thank you. Andrea.
Hello. Jonathan, how are you guys? How y'all been? I haven't been here in a while. Hi, Mary Ann. Looks like everybody was talking about the same thing. I'm wearing big and smalls, more money, more problems, more problems, more money, more problems. That's what's been happening here. I'm going to speak about the same thing everybody else has been talking about, and that is homelessness. I have an issue with the, excuse me. I have an issue with how the city deals with our homeless. I have the same, I have the same as you have, drove around Raleigh and see the explosion of people that are without at home. There is not too many places you can drive in Raleigh where you do not see homeless people. They're on every corner and in homeless camps around the city. If you are originally from Raleigh, then you know that the amount of people on the street is unbelievable and is growing by the day. Raleigh is pushing affordable housing. Well, that used to be a good term to use when referring to people who are needing homes that are affordable. Well, that term has been hijacked, and instead of using the term affordable housing, it should be low-income. This way, the focus is on the population that need the help and not for the rich and the tech people and others brought into the city to change the landscape. I am announcing today that because of the way the mayor has not prioritized improving the lives of the people who are native to Raleigh and that have been here for years, I will be running for a seat in public office. I speak here to make a difference and doesn't look like things are being heard, so I will make sure my voice is heard. And also, for those of you that are African-American or could say that you are black, there is a survey to rename us so that we could be seen as black Americans and not mixed with all others with melanated skin. I implore you to fill out this survey to make your voice heard, to make sure we are represented. Though OMB has opened up a short window of time for public comment and suggestions to update the race and ethnicity categories used on federal forms, including the US Census. This opportunity would be, will permit a new ethnicity question for descendants of people classified as black, colored, negro, or mulatto. This question, similar to the current ethnicity question, asks if Hispanics, Latinos, and will allow for this aggregated data for black Americans from other blacks with lineage in continental Africa, the Caribbean Islands, and nations outside the US. The purpose of the short survey is to form a consistence regarding the ethnic lineage identified in terms that were more accurately defined descendants of people who are classified as black, colored, negro, mulatto in the United States of America prior to 1880. As I, now, that's something I just wanted to announce to Raleigh residents. This is recorded, so I do want this so they will be able to know that OMB is doing this. We are, they're only doing this a certain time. We do only have a certain window, which is March. If we don't do this this time, we don't have but more 30 years from now to do it. We're not African-American, we are black Americans, and I do want to be addressed as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Cole?
Cole McMullin. In the last election for Raleigh City Council, only two out of eight races resulted in a winner that received 50% or more of the vote. This isn't necessarily the fault of the candidates participating in these races, rather, this is a consequence of a plurality, plurality election with no chance for runoff. On the bright side, voter turnout for local elections in Raleigh nearly tripled from 2019 due to the election occurring on an even-numbered year. So how can we continue to hold elections on even-numbered years and eliminate the plurality issue? Other municipalities in North Carolina, such as Durham, Charlotte, and Asheville, use primary elections for their local elected boards. Raleigh's Home Rule Charter gives the city council the power to implement a nonpartisan primary that could be held at the same time as the state and national primaries. A primary should be required when three or more candidates file to run for mayor or a district seat, or when five or more candidates file to run for an at-large seat. The top two candidates will advance to the general election, and I would request that the city council act now to adopt a charter amendment by July 5th, so that the Raleigh voters and city council candidates are not forced to elect another council via a single plurality election. Primary elections are by no means a perfect solution, but it would be, it would undoubtedly be an improvement that council can implement right now. For continued improvement of our election process in the future, I would encourage the council to consider adding ranked choice voting to the legislative agenda and requesting that the General Assembly allow Raleigh to use RCV for future elections. What I've talked about tonight are things that could help our democracy in Raleigh, but the democracy also needs to work for the residents of Raleigh. So I would like to state my agreement with those who have asked for more affordable housing, more public housing, less money to the police, more for housing, more for public transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Myrick.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Eugene Myrick, southeast Raleigh resident and Shaw University alum. I want to start by saying Shaw University is actually not in debt. We don't need rezoning, we need better management. And we've needed better management for a while. But before I go to that part, I'd like to start with the Planning Commission, because I was a little bit confused as to how can someone go to the Planning Commission with no plan, absolutely no plan, and request 30 to 40-story high-rises with no plan at the Planning Commission and receive overwhelming support. There was one person, I believe it was the chair, she recused herself. She just said it was a conflict, but we're interested in finding out why. And we want to know if there is a policy to determine if there were other commissioners that should have recused themselves as well. Additionally, you get 10 minutes. The applicant gets 10 minutes to state their case, so to speak, and then the opposition gets 10 minutes. But then, the applicant gets asked tons and tons and tons and tons and tons of questions, and they get up here to speak for hours, usually going off on things that they weren't even asked about. But yet, the opposition doesn't get to speak at all. So actually, my ask is that if you're going to ask the applicant questions, then that should automatically initiate additional time for the opposition to, even if it's not another 10 minutes, maybe at least five minutes, to be able to speak to some of the things that the applicant is just spewing off record, not even asked. And again, when it comes to the, the Planning Commission, I have another, you know what? Let me go back to Shaw. Let me, let me, let me skip this. Because what I wanted to pull up here, again, you have this high brown image, and if you take a look, you see one academic area. You don't see any historic buildings there. I mentioned that at the Planning Commission meeting, and magically, this image is no longer there. The same thing, Shaw has something similar, but they didn't have that Shaw University academic area. And it's no coincidence that Urban Land, was it Urban Land Institute? They did a study for Kane Realty and said they're going to create all these jobs, and they did a study for Shaw and said, you land-rich and cash-poor, you need to liquidate 75 acres worth of land and property within six months. And had it not been for COVID, they would have did that. So COVID stopped that, and the CARES Act bailed Shaw out. The university is not in debt. We don't need rezoning, we need better management.
Thank you, Mr. Myrick. Isabel Maddox. And then Laura Harris is next, followed by Carlton Watson, Pam Griffin, James Tosignan, Barbara Smalley, and Wanda Gilbert Coker. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Isabel Maddox, PO Box 946, Raleigh 27602. I'm here representing Harris Development and Halverson Development tonight. I don't have a song, I just have a request. The property that I want to discuss tonight is at the intersection of Buffalo and Forestville Roads, where there's proposed public shopping center. This project has been in process for several mon, six or eight months, very close to the ASR approval. Applied for annexation, as you know, that was deferred in January because of an issue with fire service. I don't think it's an actual question about if there was a fire, would there be fire trucks and firemen to put out the fire? That, I don't think that's in question. I think both Raleigh Fire and Wake County Fire have said, yes, everybody comes when there's a fire. So I don't think there's really a worry about fire protection, but it's who's responsible for the fire protection. But it's who's responsible for the fire protection. Now, this matter is set for March 21st. I'm asking you to please make a definitive action on the 21st. We have a closing scheduled for March 31st, and we cannot get an extension on that. We've tried, cannot get it. So we need action. So the best action would be to approve the annexation. We want to be in the city, we'll add tax base, we want city utilities, city services. That would be the best outcome. But if not, if you feel you can't do it because of the fire issue, then go ahead and deny the annexation. But along with that, we ask that you agree that the city will provide utility services and that the applicant can continue to get its permits in the ordinary course of business without being delayed because of this fire issue. And if you're willing to do that and make that statement at council, we're willing to propose or to offer a covenant that would say, "We will come back and request annexation every two years for the next 10 years," or whatever really, you know, is expected. That way, the city doesn't lose that opportunity to annex this property to get that tax base when the fire is resolved. So please, I've been discussing this with the city attorney's office, and I hope to propose a draft of a covenant to her this week. But I'd like for y'all to keep that in your mind, that we do need a definitive action on March 21st. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Laura Harris.
My name is Laura Harris, live at Looping Court. I know it's getting late for some of y'all. I prepped only one minute per experience at previous city council meetings, but I tried to fatten it out. I'm here to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. For those who don't know, ARPA money is for different types of COVID relief, including homelessness relief. The money is being spent in three phases. Note that all the following information is per the city's website. In Phase 1, the city spent $0 on homelessness. Big surprise, Phase 2, they spent $15 million on homelessness. $10 million went to buying and renovating the Hotel at Brentwood and Capitol to house homeless folks. For Phase 3, per the city website, 30% of total ARPA funds are still to be allocated. The city is using an online tool to take suggestions, but this obviously isn't a priority for them. The tool wasn't well-promoted and is out of date. Per usual, the city makes half-hearted efforts so they can check a box and say they engage with people, but they didn't... But they really just pander to the rich. I'm sure the process of planning what to do with the remaining funds is already far along or even completed, but information accessibility is virtually nonexistent. Working people or people trying to survive don't have time to go to every council meeting, every budget meeting, every committee meeting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. No effort is being made to provide information to affected people because you don't really want their opinions. So once again, the people don't have a say about their money. Thank you.
Carlton Watson? Is Carlton Watson here?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, I know to go by Elder Matt. Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mayor and the council, for allowing me to speak. First thing I'd like to say is, no cross, no crown. I have a graph here about the American Rescue Plan Act spending. The city spent $10 million in 2022 on a hotel to give homeless people shelter, but the city said they spent $15 million total. What did they spend the other $5 million on? When was the $5 spent? We'd like to know. What happened to the $5 million? You probably already have something planned, you know, to use it. Also, the city paid out $8 million to buy the hotel, but public records say that the property was assessed as less than $3 million. Why did the city pay $8 million for a $3 million hotel? We'd like to know. I'm downtown almost every day. I meet homeless people coming from Wilmington, Richmond, Virginia, Memphis, Tennessee. They know... They don't even know where to go. They're looking for food and a place to stay. So what I do, I take them around to all the places where they can get something to eat. I let them know where the shelters are. That's all I can do. If the city is going to grow and keep building, then the homeless people need to grow and build with the cities too. We got a construction guy back there. Why don't we work with him and get a couple of million dollars and at least start building something for the homeless people besides shelters where they get kicked out all the time? You know, we can't... We just can't take care of all of them, but we had to start somewhere. Y'all know we got the land. A homeless person, they got a little bit of income coming in. She needs a bedroom. She might have two or three boys or girls that sit in school. So they're going to need a bedroom. So are we talking about a two-bedroom apartment? We don't have to build high, we can stay flat. But share the land with the homeless people too. Y'all know y'all can do that. It's not that hard to do. I know homeless people who's been out there homeless for eight years, five years. Aw, man! My time is up? Okay, thank you!
Next, we have Pam Griffin. Is Pam here tonight? Is Pam Griffin here?
Good evening, all. I'm Pam Griffin. I have no home address because I am homeless. And I'm going to touch on the ARPA money. There's... My understanding, there's still money available there. And if there is a hotel that was supposed to have been bought for the homeless people, are there any units still available in the hotel for homeless people to be placed and so they'll have a roof over their heads? I'm very interested in that. And if there's any money still out there, what's going to happen with that money that's going to help the homeless people get off the streets and out of those encampments? Roofs, not tents. A place to call home, a place that has an address and a post office box. That's all we're asking for. If the money is available, we're asking that it be spent appropriately on us, for us, and not shifted here to take care of this and/or that that doesn't apply to homelessness. That's all I'm saying. That's all I want to know. That's all I have to say about that. I'm homeless, I need a roof over my head. I'm disabled. I don't need to be out here on the streets, but I am. Trying to do the best that I can, and I need a little help. And there's money available to help me and a whole bunch of other folks, the way I understand it. And I'm done.
Someone from our Housing and Neighborhoods unit will be following up with you. James Tosignat? Is James here?
I'm James Tosignat. I'm really talking to y'all because they ain't going to listen. Because they never been listening. So my name's James Tosignat. I have no address because I'm also homeless as well. I helped this lady out in a wheelchair. She's disabled, she's my caregiver because I have seizures as well. But we demand all the remaining ARPA money go towards helping out the homeless, which is homeless community are human beings too. It's not like we're a bunch of animals out here running around. So we got lives to live as well. We demand the actual affordable housing be built on the properties the city owns around Moore Square. The People's Protocol for Moore Square redevelopment is a good guide for what to do there. We demand you follow it. Only about 50 poor people or homeless people would actually be able to afford to live in the new development if we go with the protocol of the city. Yeah, giving shelters to 50 people does a lot when there are hundreds of us without shelter. We demand you to reject that protocol. Listen to our demands and to the will of the people. And that, as people, is part of the homeless community as well. Because we're not animals. Then, there's... Or there was $23.7 million for the homeless community that they were supposed to help us out with. But what are they doing for us? Nothing. And whoever just said that, we all agree with you. Putting it in their pocket, that's where it's going. So, and this young lady right here, I want to get your information because you said exactly what I'm actually interested in, seriously. Because there was a situation with this woman here that I heard of, and she was basically in the same situation that you are. And she's homeless and she's in a wheelchair as well? How many more y'all women that it's happening to? They don't care because they got somewhere to live. They got jobs. We got to fight every single day just to look for some water.
Thank you, James. As I said, we're going to have somebody follow up with both of you. Barbara Smalley-McMahon?
Good evening. The affordable housing crisis is the biggest crisis facing the city of Raleigh. According to WRAL News report, on January 26, Wake County reports 20 encampment sites for unsheltered human beings, with hundreds of others living on the streets, in cars, hotels, and alone in the woods, like Pullen's friend Diane Bass did before she was killed by a hit-and-run driver on Capitol Boulevard last fall. City owns a number of properties and has a responsibility to alleviate, not add to Raleigh's out-of-control housing crisis. We, the people, currently own 40 family dwellings in Duplex Village along New Bern Avenue, where Raleigh's bus transit system hopes to run. While it's a good thing to build more apartments in the same area along New Bern to house people and families, three important questions we need answers to from city council are: One, where, according to HUD rules, will the city relocate current residents while apartment buildings are going up? For example, the city of Raleigh owns empty real estate property on Pender Street and in the 500 block of East Edenton Street. What plans does the city have to relocate Duplex Village residents to either or both locations? Two, what is the allocated amount of money each family receives to cover their expenses for moving their furnishings and storing them when necessary, while their family is relocated to a hotel to wait for the new apartment buildings with more affordable housing to be built along New Bern Avenue? Or New Bern, yeah. Three, and finally, how many months within HUD and Raleigh City Council policies will Duplex Village residents be given to find affordable housing using city HUD funding before they lose access to the funds and must reapply? Having to keep filling out new applications for HUD-funded housing is why our friend Diane Bass died and was relocated to a vault at Raleigh City Morgue.
Just asking people to be respectful. Do we... Is Wanda Gilbert Coker here? Okay, I didn't see her. I didn't know if she was... Okay. And that is the end of public comment for this evening. We're going to take a brief, as in, three-minute break before we start. To Connectivity Right of Way. We have no one signed up in opposition.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I am Ann Conlin in the Transportation Department. So I've got a brief presentation for you about the proposed street closure. The location is a stub of Right of Way, currently unimproved, north of Pool Road and west of Sunnybrook Road. It is a stub along Diversity Way that was dedicated for the extension of Connectivity Way over toward Rawls Drive. So you can see it in red on the map. This right of way was dedicated in 2018 with a subdivision to the east. Since that time, the UDO was amended, and that stub would not be required today in the current location where it is, under the current UDO because of an exemption that was added based on the existing duplexes located to the west of the stub. I'm going to go back to the map just while I describe that. So this request is coming from another subdivision that overlaps the right of way and is seeking to build 20 townhomes. And so closure of this stub would allow for townhomes in the location of the stub along the frontage of Diversity Way. Staff has reviewed the proposed closure. We find that it wouldn't prevent access to any properties with this closure. Staff found it to be inconsistent with certain comprehensive plan policies about connectivity and supporting long-term connectivity if the parcels around it were to redevelop in the future. Connectivity Way is not a mapped street on the street plan, so it does not affect a mapped street. And closure would be consistent with the UDO because of the exemption that I described on the previous slide. So I am happy to answer any questions about the closure.
Does anybody have any questions of staff? Councilmember Patton, do you have a question?
Yeah, just one quick one. It's not about this directly, but I was just wondering if street closures are ever done through administrative site review or if they always have to come to council?
Yeah, so often a street closure is a condition of approval of an administrative site review, but state statute requires that we bring it to council and hold a public hearing to actually complete a closure.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then I'm going to open the hearing. The applicant, Tom Johnson, is here representing them.
Yes, Tom Johnson, Law Firm of Williams-Mullen at 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1700 in Raleigh, here on behalf of the petitioner. I'll just make myself available for any questions. I mean, basically, the way the ordinance is written, this stub should not be in place to preserve the housing that currently exists, which was, you know, what I think was the intent of some of those ordinance changes, is to preserve housing that are in the way of a street extension. And clearly, there are two provisions in the ordinance that the residences are there and they have buildings in excess of the value of the real estate. Those are the two exceptions in the ordinance.
Do we have any questions of the applicant? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing then. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that was unanimous clerk. Our next rezoning, Z6721, has been withdrawn by the applicant. Next, we have rezoning, Z4322, 405 Clover Lane.
Yes, ma'am. This request has not changed since you last discussed it, and the applicant has asked if it could be deferred again to allow ongoing conversation with neighbors.
When have they asked when to bring this back?
I believe they're asking for the next meeting, the 21st.
Is that... Okay, we will defer this then to the 21st if everybody is in agreement. Do we need a motion?
So moved.
Attorney?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was unanimous clerk. Next, we have rezoning, Z6122, that's 4500 Falls of Noose Road.
Yes, ma'am. This is a request to rezone 10.75 acres from CX 5 with the parking limited frontage and conditions to the same base district with different conditions. I want to note that this was initially submitted as a text change to zoning conditions, and the conditions on this particular parcel apply to other parcels. And so changing the conditions on this one would result in a map change, which is why it was submitted, resubmitted as a zoning request. But there is no change to the material results of the request. It's a nomenclature change only, but the rights that they're asking for are the same. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, and Planning Commission recommends approval. So this is in the north point of the Falls of Noose and Oldwick Forest Road intersection. There's a relatively large shopping center on this particular parcel. There's some outparcels between this and Falls of Noose to the west or south. A couple of views of the site. So what is here is the conditions that are proposed. So they are proposing a mix of office and retail space limited to no more than 240,000 square feet. They are limiting no more than 140,000 square feet of retail in a single structure, and no more than 100,000 square feet for office use. And then they are limiting residential development to no more than 250 dwelling units. So there's no residential entitlement now, so that's an increase. And, well, let me talk about what's here. So there are conditions here from Z4291 that are going to go away if you approve this. They're going to remain on some other parcels in the area. And they're going away mostly because they've been accomplished. So, construction of a right turn lane on Falls of Noose, this landscape buffer along Falls of Noose. If you'll remember, this parcel doesn't actually have a ton of frontage on Falls of Noose. It has a little flagpole that goes out there. Dedication of a 35-foot multipurpose purpose easement, and transportation, I might have been tired when I wrote this, transportation improvements previously approved by council. The prohibition on residential units and some other uses are going away, including a limit on how big a grocery store can be. So when this was rezoned in 91, there was a limit on grocery no more than 20,000 square feet. So they're just removing some of the prohibited uses here. The additional traffic lane at Oldwick Forest and Falls of Noose has been accomplished. And then building height limits associated with square foot limits on uses is also going away. So they're, remember, originally it was a five-story base district, but there were some limits. It said that things could only be in one- and two-story buildings. And then there was also a requirement for below-ground parking. So all that's going away. And so what remains are these limits on gross square building footage, retail square footage, and total office square footage. So, quick review, good summary of that. Lots of consistent policies here. Planning Commission recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have before you open the public hearing. I believe you have folks signed up on both sides of this one tonight.
Do we have any questions for staff? Okay, then I'm going to open the hearing. First, we'll hear from the applicant. We have Shane Collins and Larry Helfand signed up in oppositions.
Good evening, Molly Stewart, Morningstar Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant. I'll actually skip forward here. I think Bynum did a great job covering what is actually happening here. As you are aware, we initially submitted this as a text change of zoning conditions, and the basics of our request haven't changed. That is still, all that we're requesting to do is to change the zoning conditions. When we do that, we are required to, when we submit the proposed zoning conditions, it's as though we're submitting them anew. So it's not as though we can simply address the pieces that concern us and leave everything else in place if it doesn't make sense today. So we have to reevaluate everything in there. And as you saw, many of the previous conditions were accomplished or are no longer consistent with policy today. So that is why so many of those conditions went away. What was really driving this was that cap on the size of a grocery store. That is no longer, no longer really reflects the size of grocery stores generally. And we have a dark store here that was a Stein Mart that they're working to address and hoping that that change will help. So that's what really brought us in the door, and then we had to evaluate all of those requests. And here on your screen, you can see how all of those street frontage-type conditions really never touched this parcel. It's really just that driveway on Falls of Noose. And to the extent that they were in the conditions, they've been accomplished in any event. With that, I would like to reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, we have 6 minutes 20 seconds left. We will change that to 8 minutes. And Shane Collins, Larry Helfand have signed up to speak in opposition.
Thank you. This is District A, so I wanted to speak to it again to encourage some thought towards affordable housing, or I guess we could say low-income housing. This is a great transit area. There's a bus that goes down Falls right here, bus number two. Goes both ways, all the way downtown and back out to 540. And it looks like the plans for 6122 are 250 dwelling units, plus retail and office. It looks to be a huge parking lot, which could be used for additional housing. We walk a lot in the area, and there's a lot of large parking lots that are empty because people, they're just not going to the office, or the offices aren't that busy right now. So I don't know if we could up the number of dwelling units because we're losing a lot of lower-income apartments at Falls and Millbrook. That's going to be five stories with no apartments planned for that. So any way we could increase the dwelling units, the apartments, specifically align for lower income or affordable housing would be great. I'll leave the rest of the time for Larry.
Hi. I'm actually not an opponent of this particular project, but if I didn't stand here as opposed, I probably wouldn't get to say anything. So let's explain that right away. I want to take a second to acknowledge this counsel. If it wasn't for their understanding of the community issues and the circumstances surrounding the North Hills rezoning, chances are that issue would never have been withdrawn. You gave David a big boost fighting Goliath today, whether you realize it or not, and I just wanted to say thank you. Fight's not over, but it helped a lot. Now, why I'm here today. I'm not really here to oppose the project. As I said before, I actually like it. I told Molly I actually like it. It's a big benefit to the community. But my biggest concern with the rezoning is the review process that it traveled. If you notice, only one person attended the second neighborhood meeting. As Molly knows, this is very unusual for projects in Midtown, which usually draw 30 or 40 people to a neighborhood meeting. The cause for this low attendance in the matter in which it was presented, the initial application was for a text change to amend the uses and allow for a grocery store. This is something that would be welcome addition to the neighborhood as opposed to the space vacated by the closure of Stein Mart. Hopefully, the grocery store would be a chain that does not currently exist in the area like a Publix or a Lowe's. To date, the tenant hasn't been identified. When presented to the Planning Commission, there was no public objection for the text change. This is when the system failed the public. Based on legal opinion, the text change was considered to be a mapping issue and was changed to a rezoning. This is the case you are hearing today. This rezoning is basically the same with the amendment of uses to allow for a grocery store. However, this application now also contains an element for residential housing that was not present in the original zoning. My question is simple. When the additional residential component of up to 250 residential units was added, why didn't this go back to the neighborhood for another meeting? It wasn't properly presented to the community. If that policy does not exist, I'm requesting that it be further explored because it defeats the whole premise of community engagement through neighborhood meetings. I doubt that most of the neighbors even know that there is a change in going from a text change to a rezoning with the residential component. Finally, I want to echo what Shane just said. Adding residential is certainly a benefit to both the city and the community. It is the undefined nature of the housing that's in question. This section of Midtown is especially sensitive to loss of NOA, having just witnessed the approval of two rezonings, one for the Montecito Apartments and one for Quell Ridge Apartments. While they may never change in the short term, there's no guarantee they won't change in the long term. And that will be 600 units of NOA, low. And that will be 600 units of NOA lost. While the property owner is assuring us that no change is in the near future, there's no telling when the next buyout may occur. Based on recent apartment housing rezonings, we are again requesting that some form of affordability be contained in this application. With the added job opportunities, and you have it on the screen, I couldn't have said it any better than what you have on the screen, it's all a plus for why affordable housing ought to be located here. Accessibility, jobs, along the transition line, along transport, bus stations. It's got all the elements. Where is the missing element, which is affordability? So in summary, why didn't this application get reviewed by the neighborhood when it went from a simple text change for additional uses to a rezone with the addition of the entitlement of 250 residential units? Why isn't there a discussion of affordable housing to make up for the possible loss of the 600 units of NOA in the surrounding area? Thank you.
Thank you. Molly, do you want to use the remainder of your time?
I do. Thank you. These were helpful points to hear, and I would like to address those.
6:20, please.
As you heard, there wasn't a project here. This was about lifting that cap on, to really fill an existing store. There's not a plan to redevelop at this time. And so when the housing was added in, we, as I mentioned, we had to evaluate all of those conditions. And so one of those was a prohibition on housing. And so we don't have anything in the city's policies today that would support prohibiting housing. So we went ahead, brought that back in. When we did that, then we were triggered into a TIA that didn't make sense because not, no redevelopment was proposed. So we put the cap on it to bring it down below that level. So there wasn't really housing proposed at any point. We just wanted to remove the prohibition for the long term. And so that's where that came from. And there were five people in attendance at our second neighborhood meeting. As you know, changes to zoning conditions do happen throughout the process, something that's really necessary to allow everybody to weigh in, to allow the Planning Commission, to allow the council to make those changes. The change to the housing condition, bringing in that cap, that happened before we got to the Planning Commission. And actually, it was the day we went to the Planning Commission that I first became aware that there was a need to convert the case type. So that actually happened by itself. It didn't come with any substantive changes to the request. That was considered a technical change for that reason, because the request remained exactly as it had been before that date. So with those clarifications, I'll just be available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
With the first public meeting, was it coming to public, or not public meeting, I guess it is public meeting, the neighborhood meeting, was it coming in as a text change and then changed to a rezoning for the second one?
So yes and no. So at both neighborhood meetings, it was called a TCZ. It had the same structure that it has today. So that was true at both neighborhood meetings. Once we had that second neighborhood meeting is when we were permitted to move forward to the Planning Commission. And it was at the Planning Commission hearing that we first got that feedback that it needed to change types.
And you already had the conditions in for a possible number of housing units?
Correct.
I kind of mirror, does anybody have any questions? I kind of mirror some of the things that Larry brought up, specifically around like the fact that this is a transit corridor. And I actually talked to Transportation about it, and it doesn't fall into our TOD, so it's not eligible for density bonuses, which I think brings up a bigger point about how we need to be really looking at some of the ways that we're planning for where transportation and housing is outside of just our TOD. But with that, I do see this project as a really good public benefit for that area. That Stein Mart has remained empty for a while, and we could use a grocery store out there. So with that, I would move to adopt the proposed consistency, excuse me, dated March 7, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action.
Second. Second by Councilmember Patton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that was unanimous clerk. Okay, next we have rezoning Z 6522 on Willard Place. No one has signed up in opposition on this.
Yes, ma'am. This is a request to rezone just over two acres from NX 7 with an urban limited frontage and OX 3 with a detached frontage with NCOD to, the whole thing will go to DX 20 with a shopfront frontage inconsistent in conditions. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is inconsistent with the future land use map, and Planning Commission recommends approval You can't see the vote under the menu button. 7-0. Yeah. So this is the site. So the, this is Elmwood, which has been discussed a lot in this case. This is the Char Grill.
It doesn't really look like that anymore, though, right? Isn't, there's a hotel right there, isn't there?
On the south side, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To the right.
All of this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, right next to it, too. The AC Hotel, Willard Hotels.
Oh, back here.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah. The aerial photography has a little bit of trouble keeping up with.
That's okay.
Raleigh's rate of change. So a couple of views of the site. And they've offered conditions. So they have prohibited some uses. They've said that the first phase of the development, if it impacts Elmwood at 16 North Boylan, that that would only be approved with a certificate of appropriateness filed for the relocation of the house. And that if the house is damaged or destroyed, the applicant would provide public notice of an offer of salvage for 90 days. Also excavation of the site, they would provide an opportunity for archaeological assessment that would be conducted and then reported to the city. Anything for the, the prior to submit for first building permit for the Char Grill site, they're providing for documentation of that structure to be made and provided to the State Historic Preservation Office. And then other parcels in the rezoning request can only be approved with notice of opportunity to relocate or salvage parts of those houses on Boylan and Willard. And then they have prohibited EPIS and vinyl on street-facing exterior facades. So this would significantly increase the office and residential entitlement here. It is consistent with the plan overall. Couple of inconsistent policies here. So you've heard me say before, if you're inconsistent with the future land use map, you're going to trigger this policy. And then the downtown edges and transition area policies are inconsistent here as well. Planning Commission recommends approval. What questions could I answer for you before we hear from the applicant?
Anybody have any questions? Okay. I'm going to open the hearing then. As I said, no one has signed up in opposition. And we have Jamie Schwedler here representing the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Baldwin and members of council. I'm Jamie Schwedler, 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is Michael Blunt with Wilson Blunt, and joined as well by Whit and Charles. We're also joined by teams from McAdams and Kim Lee Horn and the landowners, Mr. Little, who's the owner of the Elmwood home, and Mr. Wilder, the owner of Char Grill. We really appreciate these landowners coming along with us on this journey to take their properties into the next generation and be a part of this development, and look forward to explaining why that was such a driving factor and how we approached this site from the outset. This seven parcel assemblage is taking split zoning and split future land map designation into a cohesive whole on the edge of downtown where you've planned for homes and transit. We're going from NX 7 Urban Limited and OX 3 DE with the NCOD to a DX 20 shopfront conditional use case. And that's to facilitate this intent to develop a mixed-use project to complement the group, the future growth and transit in this area with a plan on relocating the historic Elmwood home to a more appropriate location, given the change over time. And that really guided our moves throughout this case and the conditions that you see before you tonight. The inconsistency with the future land use map can be explained by the presence of Elmwood. You can see on the map that the maroon areas are designated central business districts where there's a recommendation for our most intense uses and DX, which is what we've pursued. The blue areas were put in place at a time where Elmwood had no reason to move, no prospects to move, because the Littles were very selective in who they chose to work with in moving forward. And so it was reasonable at that time to put the ORM designation when there was no expectation that Elmwood would find a better and more suitable home. But now that that is in the plans to return it to its, its kind of level of grandeur in a more appropriate location, it's appropriate to take this into a cohesive whole to the DX designation. And that's consistent with the changes that you've seen in this area over the past few years. There have been 11 zoning requests for 20 and 40 stories within a quarter mile of the site in the last two years. This slide shows those rezonings within a tenth of the mile, of a mile of the site. And most of the cases to our north and to our west also remove the NCOD overlay. The majority of these went from seven stories to 20 stories, so very consistent with what you've seen in that area. The height is also consistent with what you'd expect in this transition area from downtown. So we have our site here in the center with the asterisks and teal. In the background, we have 40-story zonings in lilac. In the foreground, we have three-story zonings for St. Mary's and such. And then you see the transition of all the teal 20-story zonings or entitlements, excuse me. These aren't just zoning cases, they're either existing entitlements or recently approved cases that provide that nice transition and make this transition from downtown a reasonable one. In addition to that kind of macro level, we have the immediate 20-story zonings both to our north and to our west that really make this appropriate for this area, which has changed from residential neighborhood into different heights and uses. This slide shows the change in the NCOD over time. The blue, the bold outline shows the overall North Boylan NCOD. Everything that you see in blue is no longer used for residential use. Only those yellow pockets are areas that are still kind of meeting that original intent. And so our site certainly is not taking a chunk out of the center. It's on the edge, and it's an area that's appropriate to make that change. This slide shows the number of conditions that were largely driven by our work with historic preservation experts, the RHDC, and community outreach based on that first community meeting, which was very well-attended and really drove our conversation with RHDC. It led to a commitment to seek a certificate of appropriateness to relocate the historic Elmwood home before we get approval of any site plan that would impact Elmwood. So we simply can't go forward with a, with a plan of development that would impact Elmwood without seeking to first relocate it. The contingency in place for damages is that just that, a contingency should there be a natural disaster. The commitment to archaeological assessment, the documentation, and the TR Ash houses are all direct comments out of the RHDC that led to their unanimous recommendation for approval. That led to a finding of overwhelming consistent policies based on historic preservation and others with density in the downtown and are backed by the support in the staff report of all of the consistent policies in the downtown. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Blunt, who'll explain a little bit about the status of their company and the relocation efforts.
Thank you, Jamie. Good evening. I'm Michael Blunt with Wilson Blunt Development. I'm joined here by my colleagues, Charles Wilson and Whit Cozart, and we're excited to be here to discuss this exciting project. I'd first like to provide some quick background on us. Charles and I founded Wilson Blunt in 2021 as we transitioned out of the Keystone Corporation, where we led the development of a wide array of commercial projects in and around the Triangle. We've developed buildings with a mix of uses in urban settings, including several in the city of Raleigh. Just as important as our experience and ability to complete a project like this one is the fact that we've all lived in Raleigh most of our adult lives, have growing families here, and we don't intend to leave. We'll drive past this project every day, and we're focused on creating something that we can be proud of, that our children and generations to follow can also be proud of. We take the responsibility of the site's development very seriously and understand its importance. We're very committed to the historic preservation element of this project. First, we're working with the Char Grill team to be the first tenant in the new development. Char Grill plans to stay open and operating as usual throughout the plan review process and then reopen as soon as construction is complete. Second, we're working with TR Ash, which owns three of the houses along Boylan and Willard, to salvage materials and preserve as much of those houses as possible. And finally, we're working with several groups on the relocation of the Elmwood House. We will not demolish this vitally important historic landmark as a part of this project. We are focused on the relocation of the house to a more prominent and appropriate place where it can rest forever. I'm also joined here by William Little, the owner of Elmwood, as well as Ryan Wilder and Malin Akok, the owners of Char Grill, who are in support of the project, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Patton, then Councilmember Fort.
Yeah. I know the owners of the Char Grill are in support of this. I was wondering if we could hear a little bit more about like why and what's bringing their support to this project.
We'll invite them to come up and answer those questions directly, if that's all right.
Thank you, City Council. You want to know why we're, well, we, our building was originally built in 1960. And this is an opportunity to work with, with Blunt. And as we sent a letter to, I think we sent a letter to all you council members, my partner did, Ryan, and basically that stated that what we were able to do is to look to the future. Because in Raleigh, y'all are leading the future in Raleigh, and we need an opportunity to go into the future. And this will give us an opportunity, as we said, to be able to supply for not only our children, our grandchildren, something new and that's available and easily kept up.
Thank you. I know you hadn't emailed us, but I thought it was important for the viewing audience to hear why you were in support as well.
Okay. Councilmember Fort?
Stand right there. I'm a graduate of Broughton High School and spent a lot of time at Char Grill when I was in school.
Thank you very much.
And had a lot, have heard from a lot of classmates who are very happy that you are going to keep Char Grill there. So I just wanted to make that comment, that I'm very happy to see that y'all were able to work something out to keep Char Grill in that location.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. With that, I'm going to close the hearing.
Yeah, I just want to thank the applicant, and applicant's team for the work you have all done in terms of the historic preservation opportunities here. I think this is a special case in that way. I went to the first neighborhood meeting on this, I think that was last summer, and I remember everyone was up in arms. So the fact that they're not here today speaks volumes to what you all have done, and in District D especially. So, so I really do appreciate that as a public contribution to preserving, you know, what it is that makes Raleigh special and unique. I know that's incredibly important to so many people. So I am going to motion this forward. I should use the appropriate language here. One moment. I am going to move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated March 7, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action. This approval is also deemed an amendment to the future land use map, to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Second.
That was good. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that was unanimous clerk. Right, next we have, thank you very much. Well done. Rezoning Z 7422, Levisster Court. Again, no one has signed up in opposition.
Yes, ma'am, this is a request to rezone a very small parcel. It currently has residential mixed-use zoning with the three-story height limit and the TOD overlay. And the request is to go to neighborhood mixed-use with three-story height limit conditions and the same overlay. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, however, it is inconsistent with the future land use map, and Planning Commission recommends unanimous approval. So this is on the south side of downtown, on the east side of Fayetteville Street, south of Martin Luther King. Let's see, you can see on the site, a couple of views of the site, there's an existing structure there. So the conditions that the applicant has offered here prohibit a selection of uses and then limit retail sales use to 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Theoretically, they could get a little bit more office space, and we don't think, the residential entitlement isn't really a changing effectively, nor is the retail, but the office square footage could increase. Consistent with the plan overall, a couple of inconsistent policies here. So one is about the future land use map, and the other is about floodplain conservation. This parcel is in the, there's a lot of floodway and flood zone here, but there's already a building here. And Planning Commission recommends approval. Happy to answer questions you might have before you hear from the applicant.
Any questions? Okay, I'm going to open the hearing. Again, no one has signed up in opposition. We have Jessica Peacock here.
I'm so excited to be here. This is three years in the making. I started this project in 2020 with literally a dollar and a dream, because I was teaching. And so I have started this process with a lawyer, she was here earlier, but have, am finishing this rezoning process with my team, my family's here. So I have navigated this process by myself, and I know some people have had some feedback about what the process looks like, especially for a small lot and small developer or budding developer like myself. But I'm actually very honored to have done this process, because I think I've learned so much. I do want to address like some of the inconsistencies, starting with the floodplain conservation. I've done a lot of FEMA research on the federal level. I'm very sure that Ben Brown is tired of talking to me about what can and cannot be done, but I've also been in contact with structural engineers to make sure that when we rebuild or do any renovations, which is necessary for this property, that we're going to do it right. And we're going to do it right by the people, and we're going to do it right by the environment. And I heard earlier that York Elementary 3rd graders wanted to preserve the trees, and that is what we intend to do, especially because we are, there is a buffer between our structure and the creek, and we do plan to keep the vegetation there, along with the very tall pecan tree. Does anybody have any questions for me? Sorry.
Councilmember Melton.
Well, I'm very excited to see you standing there, because I know it's been a very long process for you. I know a lot about your project, but the rest of the council and the public may not. Do you want to just briefly explain what you're planning to do?
Oh, sure, yes, exactly. I'm so sorry. My name is Jessica Peacock, and I am reopening my great-grandparents' grocery store. The grocery store was opened in 1964, and I have misspoke at the Planning Commission meeting to say that it was not used as residential, but it has been, has served as a mixed use before zoning even was like a thing. So the front of the structure operated as the retail store, and in the back were boarding rooms for folks who needed housing. We are in the TOD district and do understand that now we have to adhere to a two-story property and do hope that our first floor will be reserved for retail and the small grocery that the Walnut Terrace Carely communities have been in support of, along with, finally, the Washington Elementary School across the street has been in support of, especially as we have started already, a partnership with programming out inside of the store to, again, as a former teacher, enhance the learning space and not just the retail and residential spaces that we occupy. I know, like, this is Women's History Month, and this is my opportunity as the only girl on my dad's side, like, I have a brother and then two male cousins to leave a legacy that we usually assign to men to leave down to their children, but hello, your girl is here to take charge of leaving a legacy for my own children as well.
And you touched on this, you said it's been three-year process, but, and we've talked about this, that you're just trying to reopen your historic legacy community grocery store, and the hurdles you've had to jump over just to get this thing open, because it predated modern zoning laws, and now it's illegal, except for you doing this process. Like, what has that process been like for you?
Well, I will, like I said, I started with a dollar and a dream. I was told that this was impossible, honestly, by a structural engineer, by someone who's been through the rezoning process many, many times. I was told that this was impossible. So like I said, I really, I know there's some lawyers in here, but I definitely need an honorary land use degree or something, because I can tell you what the UDO says, I can tell you what FEMA says about stormwater, I can tell you anything you want to know about RX3 and NX3 and stormwater management. So it did take a lot of research on my part, but again, like I said, I am going to advocate for a change in rezoning for applicants like myself, but I am honored to have done this process, because again, I learned so, so much.
Thank you. Councilmember, wait, Mayor Pertham, then Councilmember Fort, and then Councilmember Black.
I just want to say I'm glad to see you before us. I remember when you started this, Jonathan and I started, you were his poster child and talking about, we're talking about corner stores. And the thing I want to say is, this is what it looks like, what you're trying to do in a positive way and how you're helping the community, that's what we need more of and less of some of the other retail that we're seeing throughout our city. So hopefully, you wrote a book that you can sell, so people can learn how to do it the right way and how to positively impact our community. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, and keep sharing your story on Twitter.
Thank you. Happy to be the blueprint.
Well, I want to say congratulations on a different thing, which is addressing a food desert, you know? So being able to bring in, because I know, you know, I've had some conversations about, you know, fresh produce and things along those lines, it's going to be very important to that community. So in addition to carrying on your family's legacy, you're providing a very valuable service to the community, so I just want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
Hey, girl, hey. I just wanted to fangirl out a little bit, because I've been following you on Twitter, and I've been following this story. I want to thank you for your perseverance in upholding this history, addressing a food desert as a food justice and food sovereignty and climate justice advocate. I really was like rooting for you, and now I'm here and I get to say something about it. So I'm just really excited for you, I'm really excited for this, and thank you, because this area needs food.
This is only the beginning.
Jessica, I just want to say I remember when this started as well, and the smile on your face, Councilor Melton, you've been our biggest advocate for corner stores and the changes that we've made. I just want to say thank you for your perseverance. Thank you for your energy, because I know you've needed it. This is not an easy process, but dreams do come true. And I just want to say, well, I can't say it quite yet, because we haven't made a motion, but we're almost at congratulations. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Melton.
I'm going to do the motion real quick. I also just want to say for staff, I think Pat's here, we got to make it easier for folks like Jessica to get these types of necessary services open. And so I know we've done some of that work with the live work and ACUs. We do have to figure out this last piece, and so I would like that to be.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to say that the planning department has been helpful. I'm also a graduate of the Raleigh Planning Academy, where I got to learn even more. So thank y'all for that. That was an excellent opportunity. Okay, now go ahead, I'm ready.
So this term, we're going to get this done. But tonight, we're going to get this case done. So I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated March 7, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action. This approval is also deemed amendment to the future land use map, to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Second.
Oh, I thought there was going to be a fight for the second.
We rehearsed it, we rehearsed it.
I cleared my head.
You were ready, yes. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Now we can say congratulations. All right, the celebration can continue outside, because we still have business, so. Next, we have rezoning Z 8122, 3304 Clearfield Drive. We do have three people speaking in opposition, Shane Collins, Larry Helfand, and Joshua Bradley. And Collier Marsh is here for the applicant.
Yes, ma'am, this is a request to rezone eight and a half acres. This is going from industrial mixed-use three-story height limit with a shod two to commercial mixed-use with a 12-story height limit conditions, and also shod two remaining. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, although it's inconsistent with the future land use map. Planning Commission recommends approval. So this is, we're west of Triangle Town Center, north of I-540, and on the east side of the railroad tracks here, this is Sumner Boulevard, and that's likely how this property would get access to public right-of-way. Couple of views of the site on the sunny shores of Gresham Lake. So they've offered some conditions here, they've prohibited some uses, they've provided for landscape buffer adjacent to I-540 to be comparable to shod one productive yard. That would go above and beyond what's required by their shod two that they are keeping in place. They've limited non-residential uses to no more than 30,000 square feet. They have provided for some green stormwater infrastructure to be part of the development plan, and also for a greenway easement to be dedicated, applies to residential or non-residential. They have said they're going to pursue green building certification, and they have said that they will set aside 25% of the area of the property as open space, open area, and offered some definition about what they mean by that, a long definition about what they mean by that. And then the, provided for salt fencing along the limit of disturbance adjacent to the north and eastern property lines, which is the area adjacent to the lake. And then also offered a pedestrian connection from the site's internal network, or from Sumner Boulevard, to the, provide a connection to the future greenway. So residential entitlement is going up significantly here, office entitlement is going down, retail entitlement is going down. Remember, they've provided a square footage limit on the commercial use. This is consistent with the plan overall, always with the future land use map and inconsistent policy. And then this is transitioning industrial land away from industrial use to likely residential use, given that they've put that limit on the commercial square footage. So inconsistent with that preserving industrial land policy. Nonetheless, Planning Commission recommends approval. What questions could I answer for you before you hear from the applicant and the public?
Do we have any questions of staff? Councilmember Patton?
Yes, could you tell us more about the greenway dedication, greenway easement? Like, how wide is it? How much is preserved, et cetera?
So let, um, let me come back to you. I can go read the code and tell you what that would mean.
I had a question. I had a question for Raleigh Water. Hi.
Stormwater or Raleigh Water?
Just Raleigh Water.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Whit Wheeler.
Hi. So in the review summary, I saw that you guys listed impact and possible mitigation, and I wanted to like go through that, hear from you, and see if like you feel like the mitigation possible, the mitigation for what you listed as an impact is represented in the case, if you think so. Do you think you can do that, or?
The impact for?
Of, on Raleigh Water. It's listed in the review document.
Okay. I'm wondering if that might be stormwater related.
I think it's stormwater.
It says Raleigh Water.
Okay.
It's part of stormwater?
It is not part of stormwater.
Should I just read it?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Okay, it says impact, and it's not clear how much demand the proposed rezoning might add to wastewater collection and water distribution systems of the city. There's an existing gravity sewer main adjacent to the site, but access to public water is not clear at this time. And then there were three listed mitigation things.
Okay. Yeah, so the issue with water, water has to be extended, it's about 1,100 feet away, and it is on the other side of I-540. So while it's possible, it will be challenging. Typically, with sewer, we would require that there, an engineering analysis of the sewer system to make sure that there is adequate capacity, but there is sewer available to the site.
Mm-hmm. And it also, it mentioned a downstream sewer capacity study may be required to determine adequate capacity to support the proposed development.
That is correct. Once the development goes in, there are calculations that are required to project how much wastewater will be discharged to the sewer and how much sewer capacity is remaining. That is, that's the standard practice that happens with most large developments.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, because I didn't get a chance to talk to you.
Okay.
And then the last one, it said verification of water available for fire flow is required as a part of the building permit process. Any water system improvements recommended by the analysis to meet fire flow requirements will also be required of the developers, that?
That is a standard engineering analysis.
And you feel like most of the concerns that you had about the impact on Raleigh Water, or at least what was noted, are being mitigated in the?
Well, they will come forth here in plan review, so that the engineer will provide calculations to support that, and they will also have to determine a route to provide water to the site.
Okay.
But we have no objections.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open the hearing.
Can I just answer that question about the greenway before you hear from the applicant? So the greenway dedication is required with residential development by the UDO, but not by non, not with non-residential development. So what they're offering above and beyond code is that they'll do it regardless of what kind of development happens, it's a minimum 50-foot width easement.
And then a follow-up question, but maybe Collier can address it, like, just are there any peculiarities around the site that would kind of imply where that greenway is going to go? Great.
Good evening, Mayor Baldwin, members of council. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe, here on behalf of the applicant at 301 Fayetteville Street. So this is the Clearfield Drive rezoning. This is the site and surrounding area, and the surrounding area and the context in which this site's located really drives this request and forms a lot of the decisions we made. As you see, we're bounded by I-540 to the south, railroad tracks to the west, and Gresham's Lake to the north and east. So the site's actually landlocked, no way to access it today. And so how we access that site really tells what we're trying to do with the property. You'll notice two different distinct development patterns, south of I-540, we've got mixed use, we've got residential, we've got a shopping center, we've got some industrial, kind of more, I guess, less active industrial, more light industrial scale uses there. But then north of Gresham's Lake, it's truly an industrial area. I think there's like a concrete plant landscaping, and some pretty intense uses that you really don't really want next to Gresham's Lake, which we see as a hidden gem in Raleigh that you wouldn't notice there until you look closely at the site. And so we're hoping to unlock that hidden gem and provide a new vision for this area with this project. So the original rezoning request as proposed, and this is as we brought it to Planning Commission, which was an important juncture in this project, was an IX3. Commission, which was an important juncture in this project, was an IX-3 initial zoning, proposing to change it to CX-12, and we had three original conditions. Standard prohibition of, you know, less desirable uses. We have a landscape buffer along I-540 that's meant to mimic the Parkway frontage requirements but not apply it to internal streets. We expect that to be TCA all along I-540, but in case there's any gaps where you don't meet TCA requirements, we'd fill in those gaps with additional plantings. And then we had a cap on non-residential uses at 3,000 square feet. Realistically, we envision a residential development here, but did want to leave open the possibility of some future mixed use, perhaps some ground floor use on a residential development. But as I mentioned, Planning Commission was an important turning point for this project because as we discussed with the Planning Commission, we felt that the industrial uses that surround Gresham's Lake are really inappropriate there. They're not environmentally friendly. If you tour the area, you tour the site, you'll see you want something different next to your lake. And so we told that to the Planning Commission. They said, well, if you're proposing a more environmentally friendly project, why don't you show it to us? Why don't you tell us how this can be more environmentally friendly and set a strong precedent for future development in the area? So that's exactly what we set forth to do. We added a number of conditions to address that comment. So with condition four, we're committing to some green stormwater infrastructure requirements. A minimum of two of those listed elements have to be provided with our project. I'm going to skip over number five for now. Six, addressing the building itself, it would have to meet one of those green building certifications upon construction, ultimate development. Seven, we're committing to have 25% of the site as open area. Now, we haven't designed the site. We don't know exactly what that open area would be. So the way we defined it would be, it can be tree conservation, it can be amenity space. So if there was grading required and it wasn't tree conservation, it's open space. But the idea here is that we're leaving open 25% of the site. We're not trying to maximize every square foot with a, you know, as wide, large footprint as possible. It's going to incentivize things like structured parking, eliminate surface parking, and impervious, impervia, impervious surface where you don't want to have it. Eight, addressing the construction phase, trying to address environmental conditions at every phase of the project, we would commit to enhance erosion controls at construction. That's double silt fencing where we have property boundaries along Gresham's Lake. The topography also lends itself to that being the right location for those commitments. Now, jumping back to five, the greenway easement dedication, that was really a technical issue in the code where, you know, we were envisioning a residential development and assumed we're going to be required to dedicate an easement for the greenway. But staff pointed out there's a loophole where if you're doing non-residential development, you only have to reserve it, you don't have to dedicate it. So we said regardless of what's happening here, you dedicate that easement. Then in discussions with Parks and Rec staff, we determined that adding a connection from our site would be a substantial benefit to make the site just that more, much more attractive and take advantage of that greenway. So we added that condition nine to address that. Transportation plan is important. So again, I talked about, look at the site, look at the surrounding area, and look at the neighborhoods around us. This is an excerpt of the city's transportation plan, which shows in purple on that western boundary, an avenue two-lane divided site. So the city's plan calls for a street connection across the edge of our site running under I-540. And that's largely because, as we all know, Capitol Boulevard at some point in the future is going to be converted to a controlled access highway, and we're going to lose the ability to go north-south in this region very easily. So this connection's critical, and it's going to come as part of this project. And so we've started the engineering of that connection. So we, as the development team, would be building a connection from the area south of I-540, so it's Sumner Boulevard. We would connect under I-540 and then to the project site. So we'd be accessing the area south of I-540 as the community that we directly tie into. And this is not only a vehicle connection, this is also pedestrian, so sidewalks and bike lanes. So multimodal transportation under that, under I-540 to reach the site adjacent to the railroad tracks there. So again, that then dictates kind of the limited inconsistency here is the future land use map inconsistency was because although the designation is business and commercial services, what that describes is industrial uses, and this is not that. And it's not appropriate because we're tying into the neighborhood to the south, and that's really that regional mixed-use center, that's what we would become a part of. That's who we're tying in with. The only other inconsistent policy was the loss of industrial land, but I think through the course of the rezoning, staff agreed that this is not an area that's appropriate for industrial development in the future. So though we're inconsistent with the future land use map, really what we've learned is the future land use map's outdated here. And then one exciting development we learned through the process, we learned later on when looking at the surrounding area and talking about our vision for a, you know, a dense residential development, potential for mixed uses, is the potential for an S-line stop just north of this site. And so this was published in November. It shows that this idea we had about transforming that area is something that the city, the DOT, has been looking at as well, sees a similar vision for the surrounding area. And so we think that's exciting. It says we're on the right track with this project. So we're consistent with the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission recommends approval, and I'd like to remain, reserve just this last minute and a half for any rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay. We have minute 31 left. Does anybody have questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I just had a question about the road that would be built. So can, is that all on y'all to do for the development, or does the city have to contribute at all?
Yes, so we would be constructing that. That's the only way we have access. So we're building the road, and that's the kind of water and utilities connection. We'd have to be extending utilities to our site. So it's a major undertaking and really kind of drives the need to then go vertical with our site.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Now we're going to go to those who've signed up for opposition. Shane Collins, Larry Helfand, and Joshua Bradley. You have a total of eight minutes. So you all decide how you're going to divide that up.
Hello, council. I want to be short so we have time for my other folks. Shane Collins, the North Raleigh. I was concerned about the tunnel. The tunnel under I-540. When they built North Hills and the development on the Bank of America side, they said there was going to be either a tunnel or a bridge going across, but then that was, that was taken off the table because it was too expensive. This tunnel under I-540, a multimodal tunnel under I-540, which is very, very large federal highways, is going to be very expensive. I just find it, I find it difficult to believe that a business would build this. It's just the expense of it. I like the residential uses of the property. I go out there fairly frequently. There's a nice brewery out there, Compass Rose. And I do know the industrial complex that's out there. So anything to, you know, alleviate more industrial out there would be great. I don't know how much housing or units would be affordable housing or lower, lower-cost housing. And I was concerned about the lake protection, the double silt fence protecting the lake from the construction. The dirt, the mud is still going to get through the silt into the lake. So those are my concerns.
Larry and Josh?
Can you do me a favor and put the pictures from your presentation up?
What, these or these ones? Okay.
Before I even start, and before you make a decision on this particular rezoning, I know it's the end of a long day. I encourage you to go out and visit this site before you make a decision. You can see it's got woods all around the site. I'm very concerned what's going to happen to it. Environmental protection while they're building is nothing compared to what it's going to be after they build. I don't usually comment on cases that are not within the midtown, but I could not let this one go. This seems to be a classic case of the chicken and the egg. Do you approve a rezoning for a remote area that's within the ETJ before annexation, or do you evaluate the case after roadway development conclusion of the S-1 Transit Oriented Development Study? I know this area well. I was just there getting my service to my car. Why is this rezoning of particular interest? As noted in the staff report, the area is inconsistent and should be explored further. The future land use map designates this area as business and commercial services, which is intended for high-impact or heavy commercial activities that are not compatible with residential uses. If you visit the site, you will see the gravel operation, you will see the family-operated landscape business, you will see the stone yard, you will see automobile row. And yet they're envisioning this as a beautiful residential area that you can't get to currently. There's a chair that sits by the lake that somebody is fishing from. Used to be swimming, boating, and fishing. I don't think those recreational opportunities still exist, but the trees are still there to protect the lake. Conceptually, the site meets both criteria, being located along Interstate 540 and Capitol Boulevard, a future transportation corridor. But to hear is the fly in the ointment. This site has no current road access other than a service road from Gresham Lake Road and a pass-through for the existing rail line. So if you want to see it, you got to walk the rail line. On top of that, the area is not incorporated into the city limits and would require annexation for city services. So I return to the chicken and the egg. How does one develop the site without roadway access? I think you need DOT approval for the type of road they want to put under, an interstate. The only access to the site will be an extension of Sumner Boulevard since the site lacks direct access to either the railroad or the interstate. It's the same reason that industrial use of the site is limited. It's the same process that the applicant has offered for a single-point entry exit from the site. Has anyone informed the residents along Sumner Boulevard that all of the residential development is going to dump into their neighborhood? I question why no one attended the neighborhood meetings. Was it notification process? Maybe they were too far away? Did they get notice? That's something for staff, and it's something you can ask them. I don't know. But I find it ironic that these people living in a quiet neighborhood that can't get off Sumner Boulevard onto Wake Forest Road know that this amount of traffic is going to generate from a residential complex beyond their reach. 1,200 residential units, my goodness. My further concern is for the site itself. Gresham Lake was used as a recreational lake previously. It was a popular area, as I said before. I don't know how much this is in play today, but I do know it's heavily industrialized. There aren't any public roads from Gresham's Lake Road that don't end in a private business. There is no thoroughfare around the lake. You can't get there. The greenway, yeah, it might happen in the future, same as the roads that the city is planning for the site may happen in the future. And I think you should ask transportation for a timeline. I think this is a pipe dream. On top of that, I'm going to go through this really quick because I know it's late in the day. There is a transportation study going on because the property sits next to a rail line. This is the second case we've had where a property sits next to a rail line, yet there's no consideration for what types of homes should sit next to a rail line. I'm hoping that the study provides a buffer to the railroad, perhaps, a little noise protection from the railroad, and perhaps some setback distance so nobody builds on top of the railroad. It's a perfect location for people to use the rail line, the S-1 line, to get into town or wherever they'd like to go. But we have no policy for affordable housing be built along rail lines. Hopefully it'll come out of the study. So I'm asking you to wait, one, on the study to be complete. It was supposed to be complete last year, and I think it's pretty close to completion this year. That's the first impact. The second is, there is such a great transportation impact on the neighborhood below this, I'd like to see you study it further. If you look at the picture that's being generated by the transportation project, it looks like this. Beautiful development. What's the problem? Industrial areas. They're not moving out anytime soon. You don't just move out a gravel pit. It stays, and there are many other local businesses surrounding the lake. And the trees are protecting the lake. If you remove, as they typically do, clear-cut the trees to put in the residential units, where is all of that drainage going to go? It's going to go into the lake.
Okay, thank you. I take it, Josh, you didn't want to speak?
[laughing]
Collier, you have a minute and 31 seconds left.
So just a few comments. First of all, on the neighborhood meeting, you know, when we looked at the area and you look at where notices would go, we weren't sure how many people would turn out. So what we did in this project is we overnoticed for the first neighborhood meeting. So the code requires 500 feet for the first meeting, 1,000 for the second. We did 1,000 for both, hoping to capture anybody that's interested. Unfortunately, no one showed up, so we focused our discussions with Planning Commission members and led to that environmental focus with this project. Want to go back to kind of how the site would lay out if I can maybe get to plan. Here we go. The street connection, again, just want to emphasize, we'd be constructing that, we'd be bringing utilities. It's a plan, it's a street that's called for by the city's transportation plan because when you look at the long range and we have controlled access in the area, this whole area is not going to be able to connect to one another. So this is a critical street for the future of the city. The developer's taking upon themselves to construct it. Now, with the preservation of green area, we've done a number of things, but we have the 50-foot buffer requirement, tree conservation in this area, the greenway corridor, this green line is meant to represent the greenway corridor. Realistically, what that means is this is a greenway corridor along the stream bank with buffer on either side. So now we know we have green areas on both sides of the site, where we have preservation right along the lake. And then finally, we have to build the street there. So that's how you kind of create the site and determine the developer.
30 more seconds. You have some more time. We couldn't set the clock right.
Just to reiterate, I mean, the site kind of defines itself, and so we had considered all of those aspects and appreciate the commentary. Developers taking it upon themselves to build the street to provide units, so thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I had a question for, like, what the study that he was talking about from transportation, like, what study was that that he's, I'm new.
So the State Department of Transportation has received federal funding to acquire S-line right-of-way, rail right-of-way through North Carolina to the north, to the Virginia border, to, I think it goes all the way to Charlotte. So they are doing some planning, very preliminary planning right now for the S-line corridor, really between Raleigh and the Virginia border. And so that image that Larry held up and also that Collier included in his presentation, both are from that project. I would say at this point, the, that work is very preliminary. It's not anything cooked enough that we could hang land use policy on because it's so, like, it's not clear if it's commuter rail or high-speed rail for one. So if it's high-speed rail, there'd be one stop in Raleigh, and that would be Raleigh Union Station. If it's commuter rail, there would be two or three stops. We don't, we don't even know that at this point, right? They're still kind of casting a pretty broad net. So there's a possibility that this rail line would result in a stop roughly in the Gresham Lake area, which is the illustration that if it's commuter rail, I'm sorry, if it's, yeah, if it's commuter rail.
It's passenger rail.
Passenger rail. Thank you. But that's, that's not, it's not clear at this point.
So there's been, the state's been having different meetings and workshops, and in attending those, they have basically four or so stops in the Raleigh area, including Wake Forest and other areas. If you just do S-line dash NCD, S-line TOD study, all the information's there. So, but this is being led by federal, by the federal government overall, so with the North Line NCDOT leading the charge within North Carolina proper.
I was just curious about it. Do we have any additional questions? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, well, I shared a lot of the concerns around. Yeah, well, I shared a lot of the concerns around just clearcutting. I think we do a lot of clearcutting around the city, but I do think this project has done a lot to kind of mitigate with buffer zones and easements, as well as, like, development protections for, for the lake. So I'm going to motion to approve, and I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated March 7, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action. This approval is also deemed an amendment to the future land use map to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Patton, go ahead.
Councilmember Patton, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was unanimous, clerk, thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z-8222 Mitchell Mill Road. No one has signed up in opposition.
Yes, ma'am, this is a request to rezone about 10 and 1/2 acres. It's going from RX6 with conditions to RX3 with conditions, and there's no parking limited frontage because you can't do, oh, yeah, parking limited. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with future land use map. Planning Commission recommends approval. So this is on the north side of Mitchell Mill. This is kind of southeast of 401, and on the west side of Forestville Road. And you can see there's a lot of residential in this area already. And there is a street plan street here. So this is the site, this is the view from Mitchell Mill. They've offered some conditions here. There are some existing conditions here that set reimbursement rate for right-of-way dedication. That's a condition we no longer honor or enforce as a city. Requires cross-access to adjacent properties to the east and west, requires the creation of a homeowners association, some community amenities, and a protective yard. Also, a setback from residential buildings to the north prohibits multifamily, requires cluster unit development if it's more than four units on acre, and provides direct vehicular access to Mitchell Mill Road for any dwelling unit. So that's what's on the property now. And so what they are offering instead through this case is a prohibition of cemetery use, sets a maximum of 24 dwelling units with any, within any building within 500 feet of the northern property boundary, and sets a maximum of 36 dwelling units within any single building elsewhere on the site. I want to be clear, this is not limiting the total number of units across the site. It's really establishing the size or scale of buildings that we will be built within the, within 500 feet of the northern property boundary and elsewhere on the site. Prohibits parking, parking between the building and Mitchell Mill Road, and also between the closest building and Caliber Woods Drive. So the residential entitlement is going up here because they're going from the residential district to that RX3. They get the 4,000 max commercial square footage. Remember, that has to be ground floor of the building in a corner unit and intersection of two public streets. It is consistent with a number of policies, and Planning Commission recommends approval. What questions could I answer for you before you open the hearing on this one?
Who has questions?
It's me, surprise, always with the questions. I have one that I hope you can just kind of share with the viewing audience. At the neighborhood meeting, there were some concerns about prohibited uses that don't show up in the zoning conditions, but as I understand it, it's because they're not allowed in the RX district at all. So I was hoping you could kind of tell us a little more.
About what's allowed in RX?
Yeah.
Sure. So RX residential mixed-use allows group living, and generally multifamily, single-family, detached, attached, townhouse. Mostly, the commercial uses that are allowed on, in that ground floor corner unit are in the personal service retail category, so unlikely that, I don't even think it allows any of the auto-related uses. I don't think it allows bar nightclub tavern. Is there a particular use you are really hoping I'll say is not allowed?
For sure, and now I can give you more guidance. So gas station was one that they really wanted to ensure wouldn't happen, and also vape shops.
I don't know that, let me get back to you on that while you hear from the applicant.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open up the hearing. Michael Birch is here for the applicant. And as I said, no one has signed up in opposition.
Actually, you can just leave it on the staff presentation. It's great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners here on behalf of the applicant. Well, I was looking that up, but just to address your question as well, so gas station is not permitted in the RX district. Any of the non-residential uses that would be permitted in the RX district would have to be located at the intersection of Caliber Woods Drive Extension and Mitchell Mill Road. There are also hours of operation limitations, and obviously, we're limited to a size. I know you mentioned vape shops. There's not a particular use that, you know, that might just fall within kind of the broader retail sales, so that's why we did not specifically call it out, because there was really no way to define that. It's not defined in the code, so. Again, just at a high level, purpose of this case is to permit additional density, to facilitate development of an apartment community. This request is consistent with the future land use map, the Wake Crossroads Area Plan, all of the applicable comprehensive plan policies, including kind of introducing a new housing type in this area that's really dominated by the single-family detached dwelling. Additionally, we have those conditions to ensure compatibility with surrounding properties, limiting the massing of the building. And importantly, this development of this property will facilitate the extension of Caliber Woods Drive, which will provide a connection running parallel to Forestville Road from Mitchell Mill up to the Lowe's Food Shopping Center at Leland and Lewisburg Road. This would also provide, this intersection here for Brighton Neighborhood is an unsignalized exit out of their neighborhood, you know, on the southbound Lewisburg Road, so this would allow them a way to get out of their neighborhood and get down to a signalized intersection with Mitchell Mill. In discussions with Counselor Patton, she had asked kind of what we might be able to do, what the applicant might be able to do to address the affordable housing issue. And while we are adding to supply, adding to housing variety here, we are asking council, just for an additional two weeks, for us to be able to add a condition that addresses the affordability issue. So we would ask to come back on March 21st.
Do we have a motion then to defer this to March 21st? Would that, yes, that would of course be day, because that's when we have our meeting. Do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, when you're looking at that, I'm trying to be ahead of issues, can y'all look at, talk to Transportation of what could possibly be done to deal with traffic calming?
Yes. So that was something that was raised at our initial neighborhood meeting, and so right after filing, we had a meeting with Transportation, both planning and engineering, and talked about opportunities at the plan review stage for traffic calming within the proposed neighborhood. We anticipate on-street parking, and so doing bumpouts, things like that. And then I think if the need arises outside of the neighborhood, there is the possibility maybe to add some stop signs there. There are two intersections north of us that, kind of that through northbound, southbound movement is not, doesn't have a stop sign, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you, because whatever you do in the beginning is a lot cheaper.
That's right. Yeah, we certainly want to slow traffic going through what's going to be developed, so yes, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we have our last item of the evening, the Wakefield Small Area Study. This is the final report. I have two people signed up in support, Michelle Tomlinson and Delmonte Crawford. Now, Delmonte, if you're going to go up there and talk against it, I'm going to move you over to the opposition. So just, I know you did that last time, so just warning. And then I do have somebody signed up in opposition, Jamila Dennis. Is, is that person here? And is Michelle Tomlinson here? Okay, I guess Delmonte is the only one here to speak then.
Excuse me, yeah, we have another member of public who's indicated they signed up to speak in support.
So what's your name?
Chris Dor.
We're ending up with the same net number of support people. Let's just roll with it. Let's just let her speak.
We'll wait, and let's get the report.
Good evening. Hannah Recau, Planning and Development. So this item is the final report and comprehensive plan amendment for the Wakefield Small Area Study. I'll talk really briefly about the study area process, talk through the recommendations and the comprehensive plan amendment. So jump in, this is the study area, this is in North Raleigh, near a town of Wake Forest and Falls Lake. The study area covers a portion of Falls of Neuse Road and some other major corridors in the area, Wakefield Pines Drive, Forest Pines Drive, and some of the mixed-use areas around those corridors. The study had three phases of engagement with the community to learn about the issues in the area, verify what we heard, and think about options, and then to review draft recommendations with the community. This was done primarily virtually in 2021. And what we heard, a pretty strong message, a lot of interest in transportation, traffic safety, establishing safer places to walk and bike in the area, and then a lot of appreciation and interest in the natural resources in the area and the Greenway system. And so those, consequently, those priority, community priorities shifted the study recommendations to focus largely on mobility. So there's sort of three categories, enhancing crossings in the study area, Greenway options and bikeway options. And then the report also notes some best practices around stormwater management as well. So crossing recommendations, currently, there are a handful of intersections on Falls of Neuse Road where there are lights, and these are relatively far apart, don't allow pedestrians to cross in all directions. And so these recommendations are to enhance the crossing so that people can walk and cross in all directions, and then add additional crossings, including some mid-block crossings, so that people don't have to walk as far to cross Falls of Neuse Road. And then there are also some recommendations along Wakefield Pines Drive for crossings. This is an area where Wakefield Schools and the YMCA are located, and there's a lot of pedestrian activity between there and the neighborhoods. So examples of what that might look like on Wakefield Pines Drive, this is what's currently there for a crossing, so adding enhancements to the ramps, the crossings themselves, additional plantings on the median, and then something like a hawk signal where someone can press a button, get a light, and really communicate very clearly with people and cars that some people are crossing there. Another example, this is Falls of Neuse Road, the existing suitescape, there's a median of varying sizes, two lanes in each direction, and then again, use of a light, crossing, pedestrian-oriented elements, including things like arperian buffer plantings can both enhance the experience for people walking and also possibly have a stormwater benefit as well. And then this slide is just to illustrate that there are some small details that the report notes that really enhance the safety and comfort of crossings, so things like where the median ends and the angle of the crosswalks themselves. So Greenway connections, there is existing Greenway in this area, south of the Neuse River, and as well as within the residential area north of the study area. And so these recommendations add on to those existing Greenway trails, they're getting planned trails along Richland Creek extending north of Falls of Neuse Road, noting some potential in the future to connect to a future Wake Forest system of trails. And then also identifies on-road side path and multi-use path facilities along Falls of Neuse Road and Wakefield Pines Drive. This includes a potential project to use the median space in Falls of Neuse Road for a more meandering recreational trail, as well as potential to cross, the Richland Creek Trail to cross Falls of Neuse Road with a grade-separated crossing. There's currently a bridge there, and it appears that there is enough space to possibly accommodate a trail underneath current Falls of Neuse Road. So accommodate paved trail, add additional plantings, lighting, and art that could produce a much more comfortable and safe way for people using the trail to cross. And then another illustration of what a side path might look like on Falls of Neuse Road. So wider than a sidewalk typically is, perhaps some vertical elements to separate from the car lanes. And then a cross-section, just really to illustrate that the multi-use path and the median, the idea here is using the existing space, doesn't require curb movement of curbs, and could be a creative way to add, add another facility to this corridor. So bikeway recommendations, there are a few existing separated bike lanes, mainly on Forest Pines Drive and Common Oaks Drive, so this is adding to those. The black dotted lines are the proposed separated bike lanes, so connecting two, the two shopping centers in the area. And then the red dotted lines are lower-speed neighborhood roads, proposed as to be signed bikeways. So this is really connecting the neighborhoods to the separated bike lanes on larger, larger quarters in the area. So like with the median multi-use path, this is a section of Common Oaks Drive that doesn't have a bike lane, and just illustrating that a separated bike lane can be accommodated within the existing roadway, and still have a standard travel lane. And an illustration of what that looks like, so vertical elements like a bollard or armadillo to create that separation with car travel lanes. And so this is the Greenway and bikeway connections altogether. We really were looking at the overall network. We heard from the community that off-road facilities was the preference, followed by separated on-road facilities, and that is what the recommendations are trying to provide. So connecting neighborhoods to the main corridors, to the shopping centers and other destinations, as well as connecting to the recreational facilities in the area. And then, as I mentioned, the report does acknowledge kind of best practices around stream restoration and assessment, as well as stormwater control measures that new development can pursue. So the study recommendations in front of you are this identified list of potential street and Greenway projects, and the comprehensive plan amendment would add a new section of various specific guidance to the comprehensive plan, specifically for Wakefield. This area, this section rather, has a list of policies that focus on encouraging Greenway-oriented development, given what we heard about support for Greenways, and then also encouraging that the currently true-lined corridors in the area remain as such. And then a list, a longer list of actions, which is to further study and implement the projects that are identified. And then your Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval, 7-0. And with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Do you have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm going to open the hearing then. As I said, signed up in support was Michelle Tomlinson, Delmonte Crawford. Then the woman here, who's, we don't have you signed up, but I'm going to ask the city attorney, is it okay if we have her speak?
Yeah, I would suggest you make a motion and vote on it because of UDO requirements.
Okay. We'll make a motion. Tell me your name again.
Chris Door.
Chris Door, that we allow Chris Door to speak as part of the support.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Michelle Tomlinson is not here. Okay, please come up.
I'm Chris Door. I live in Wakefield, which is a half hour drive from here. So, but we are Raleigh. Sometimes everyone forgets, because I know there's a lot of concentration on downtown, as you learned tonight, as you must listen to all the time, all of the difficulties and concerns. But Hannah and her group did a wonderful job of following through on this plan. I really don't know where it all came from, but I went to all the meetings. And it's quite elaborate. I, I, I support all of it, but what's really important is that, what's crucial, is the connection between Wakefield. We have about 3,000 residences, and we are separated by the Neuse River from the Neuse River Trail. And Old Falls of the Neuse goes down one side of us, New Falls goes down the other side. And there, it's impossible to walk or ride a bike down Old Falls. I mean, 25 years ago, I did it. There wasn't any traffic, and Wakefield wasn't there. New Falls has a broken-up sidewalk and a very narrow crossing for that bridge. My husband goes down regularly and takes his bike across that to meet his bike group. Everybody, if you want to go down there on bike or by walking, it's very dangerous. And what they propose is to widen this. And as I understand from the previous meetings, they already need, have plans for that bridge to make changes. So this would dovetail with that, so that the people who live on our side don't have to pack up their bikes and their kids and get them in the car to drive three blocks or a half a mile to the dam parking lot. That is the Falls Dam, not the dam, the Falls Dam. I'm tired.
Been here since 6:30, it's okay.
I hope you support, my car is still out there. I, I. My husband usually drives in the dark. I hope I get home, but he's out of town. So I hope you approve this, this plan, and thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, and sorry for the confusion, but we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the meeting, well, thank you for the minutes. Mayor Protem, do I have the ability to switch the slides?
All right. Now, Madam Mayor, I was going to make a, or request that council brings a motion to strike down your comment regarding opposition, but I'm going to be a little nice to you today because I am tired and I got to be up at 6 o'clock in the morning. So regarding Dick's Edge, I am supportive of the plan, Madam Mayor. But what I'm not supportive of is the fact that there will be commercial property in that area. So while I was supportive, I'm still supportive of the Dick's Edge study. So I, my hope is that in next hearing, you don't make that comment about moving me over to the opposition just because you don't like what I said. Now, regarding the plan.
Delmonte, I'm just going to.
Ma'am, this is my minutes. Regarding the plan, whose district is this in?
In opposition.
Whose district is this in? Councilwoman Patton. So Councilwoman Patton, as we know, District A, District B, C, D, and E, we all kind of intertwine. But this is a road that I would typically take pre-COVID. And so I do like the study here. My, my only thing is with this particular, with this particular area here, I know that there's different crosswalks. And then on the right-hand side, I think this is like a site where the individual can go onto the road. My only concern is that will there be signs? I know that there's signs here, but will there be signs up the road to let commuters know that, one, there's a sidewalk or a crosswalk? And two, is there a way that we can actually have a, just, you know, for ADA purposes, a crosswalk that speaks to the individuals on that side? But this is a plan, a final plan that I do like. I like the text in it. I do like the fact that there are buffers in the area, Councilwoman Patton. And I also like the fact that the planning board is trying to, really trying to connect these different districts together so that we aren't having to go to like Lakeland, or we aren't having to go to these other greenways. And as the young lady was saying, there's 3,000 people that are being unaccounted for. And so as long as this meets ADA, and as long as we can get those 3,000 people on these greenways, I do support it. And please, Madam Mayor, don't move me over to opposition. Thank you.
So that is all the speaking, speakers we have this evening. Jamila is not here as well. And Councilmember Jones, we have heard about hawks twice today. Who knew? Yes. So are there any other questions for staff? I'm just going to say the renderings are beautiful. Really nice job. And I am now going to close the hearing. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I want to shout out my predecessor who got the process started, Councilmember Cox. I also want to shout out staff for doing this, especially in a COVID time. Thank you for your work. Thank you for coming out and support. I'm really excited that you're here. And also, if you need a ride, I'm happy to provide one. If you need a ride, so you don't have to drive in the dark. I don't see fancy language in the backup, so I'm going to use people language. I'm moved to approve the Wakefield Small Area Plan.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. With that, tonight's meeting is adjourned.